...name, amen. In the name of the Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 1.2 motions adopted in camera. Motions regarding property were adopted in camera. 1.3 information received in camera. The following information was received in camera. Acting elementary vice principal at St. Brenedett Catholic Elementary School, Carol Horsky, appointed as acting elementary school vice principal at St. Brenedett Catholic Elementary School effective May 30th, 2019. Retirements. Helen Brennan, Sandra Fulton, and Joanne Gravina retiring effective June 30th, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I already did. I know I'm hard to follow sometimes.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Trusty Antumasi, seconded. Trusty Guzzo. Trusty Carabella.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a notice of motion.
Okay. Would you read your notice, please?
Is it to read or just the title? Just the title. Clustered and Accelerated Classes in Secondary School.
That will be included in the later part of the agenda. So may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Trusty Antumasi, seconded. Trusty Duarte. Would you do that again, please? It's very close. All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Declaration of conflict? Are there any declarations of conflict? No declarations of conflict. We have two presentations this evening. And I would call on Superintendent Cipriano to start off with the SEA presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll stand. I'll have our SEA team sit and we'll get started. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. SEA is Special Education Amount. That's what the acronym stands for. It provides funding for our students for technology, either mobility technology or assistive technology, in our classrooms. The reason we're here tonight is in March and April, we had two, what we called Ignite Technology Nights, to provide for parents and students the opportunity to see our students using that technology in action. And at one of our events in Milton, Trusty Duarte was at the event and asked for a presentation to have our students who were presenting that evening to come to the board and present. So that's why we're here tonight. I'd like to introduce our SEA team. We have our lead, Jen Thompson, our special education consultant for SEA, Anita Bader, and James McGinnis is also on our SEA team. And just a few stats from SEA, which we're incredible and very proud of. So our AT claims, assistive technology claims this year, we've had 759 claims, and this is funded by the ministry. It's very labor intensive, each claim. Our team works with each school CERT to process these claims. Those claims amount to $576,965 in assistive technology in our schools, supporting our students. Our mobility claims, which are walkers, FM systems, standards, sensory equipment, blind, low vision equipment, we had 202 mobility claims this year that amounted to almost $550,000 in equipment for our students. So we're very proud of that. In addition to that, the SEA funding provides for training for staff, that we have had hundreds of hours for training of our staff. And again, it also allows us to support our students, train our students, and other students in classes with students who use technology, so that they can better integrate their learning. So I will pass it on to our lead SEA, Jen Thompson, to introduce our students here tonight. Before I do that, I do want to acknowledge, at our two parent nights, and also here tonight, we have two staff members that have come out to support the students. We have Bill Hawk, a teacher at Holy Trinity. Thank you, Bill, again. And we have our Special Education Department head for Holy Trinity, Pat Urinsich, here tonight. And again, they were there for both nights and here tonight. So now I'll pass it on to Jen.
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you for having us. We're really excited to be here. I know the kids are really excited, too, and we are really, really proud of them, because they've done some really great things, and they showcased that, which is how we got the invitation here. So before I actually introduce them, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about our evenings, so that you knew, know what they are, and how we came about having them. So we put out an application for what we called the Ignite Technology Grant, and that was through our partnership with LearnStyle, who we use to train all of our students in assistive technology, and they also do some of our staff training as well. And our goal was really to bring awareness to technology and modern learning. And so what we did is, we wanted to create some leadership opportunities for our students, and we wanted them to be able to come out and be leaders in technology, and show how they are leaders in technology. And we wanted to show how this technology has really helped them with self-esteem, with communication skills, using the SEA equipment that we provide for them. And so what we did is, we put out two grants. We put out an elementary grant, so it was open to any individual or group of students who used SEA technology. And all we asked is that, in their own way, they would share their experiences with us. And they could have done that through a PowerPoint presentation, we had a video submission from Bridgette, so they were able to let us know that in any way that they wanted to. And we were able to give out awards of $250. And they could use that money to either support their presentation at the SEA showcase, or to buy themselves some more technology that would continue to help them in schooling, and they get to keep that technology. So it could have been, you know, new headphones that would help them with speech to text. It could have been apps or programs for post-secondary or for post-elementary. So they had a real choice as to what they were going to use those funds for. It was the exact same thing for our secondary, so it was open to any students who were in grade nine, right up until the age of 21, who had SEA technology. And they had the exact same task, and that was just to share their experiences as well. And these students were given $500 each, for the same purpose. They could either use it to enhance the presentation that they were going to do, or to purchase technology for themselves as we went forward. Now, one of the really great things is, we were initially given $2,000 as grant money, and we had such great applications, we went back to them and we said, can we wiggle this a little more? And we actually ended up getting an additional $1,000. So we were able to give out $3,000 in technology grants to our students, instead of three. So that was a really great partnership for us, and we're hoping to keep that for next year. And so, we had a bunch of winners. We had Bridgette at Sacred Heart, and she's one of the students that's here with us tonight. We had Ian, Michael, and Kiara. They were from Ascension Catholic Elementary School. We had Katie, she was from Our Lady of Fatima. We have Brooklyn and Logan from St. Joseph. And then we had a group, Mackenzie, Leah, Cheyenne, and Vanessa, and they were from our structured teaching class up in, at Holy Rosary, up in Milton. And then at the secondary school level, we had Matthew and Adrian, who are here with us tonight, so they're from Holy Trinity. We also had a student named Michael from St. Thomas Aquinas, and we had Daniel from Jean Vanier. So all of those students received monetary awards through our grants. We held two evenings. They were extremely well-received. We were very, very proud of them. When we first started talking about the evenings, we had no idea what to expect. It was something we had never done, and I remember saying, if we get like 20 people each night, that would be amazing. Over the course of two nights, we had approximately 300 people attend. So it was well beyond anything we could have ever asked for or expected. So we had two locations. We had one at Corpus Christi and one at Jean Vanier, and it was broken into two parts. So the first part was our student showcase. So that was where all of those students' names that I shared with you, they showcased their journeys, their experiences, and their use of technology with anybody who wanted to attend that evening. So they set up booths. We also had their, the LDAH joined us, and we also had our LearnStyle partners. So parents had an opportunity to meet some of the trainers, to meet the owner of the company, to talk to them, interact with them, and we even had a candy booth there. So it was really, really exciting night. It was very well-received. And the second part of our presentation was a keynote, and we had a keynote by DJ Cunningham, who is the co-founder of LearnStyle, and he shared his experiences about overcoming obstacles, and he had a learning disability, an ADHD, and the feedback we got from that was amazing. He was really able to connect with the people in the audience, and really able to connect with the students that were there. So it was a wonderful evening. And now, we're going to meet some of our students, and they are going to do a little presentation. So we are actually going to have Michael and Adrian from Holy Trinity. Oh, I've got to show you one more thing. So if you look up on the screen, you'll see those big checks. Every single student who won got one of those big checks. So they're all proudly on display, and I have to say, Mr. Cipriano was a trooper. He went on a roadshow with us for two and a half solid days delivering these checks to students. So we went to every single school, and every single student in group got one of these. So, wasn't the real thing, but they did get the real one at the same time. So thank you for that. That was amazing. And they were super excited, right? Wasn't that exciting? Super fun. Okay, so we're going to bring up Michael and Adrian first. They're going to do a little presentation for you.
So hi, I'm Adrian. And my name's actually Matthew, not Michael. So we're twins, actually. He's my older brother. And we've gone through a whole bunch of different challenges with school, because we're both diagnosed as being double exceptional, having two exceptionalities. So we both actually are diagnosed as being gifted, and also having LD. And so, and this brought a lot of challenges when going with school. So we were diagnosed in about grade four, and with these diagnoses, we were originally brought up with two assistive technologies. So we had Premier Technologies and Dragon Naturally Speaking. This helped us with our reading and writing and getting our thoughts out, but we did end up falling behind with reading. So through that, we ended up moving to St. Andrews, where we enrolled in the gifted program, and we stayed there for two years. This allowed us to have more of a computer-based learning style, so a lot of our assignments were done on the computer, but we still had the main issue of, we fell behind in reading. So from Trillium, or from St. Andrews, our CERT directed us to the Empower Program, which greatly helped us with our reading. So we ended up transferring to Trillium Demonstration School in Milton, where we ended up doing Empower. And being at Trillium, it also allowed us to open a lot more assistive technology doors. So we had access to a whole bunch of different technology, like iPads, laptops, MacBooks, and a whole bunch of others. And it really allowed us to determine how we, like, what we like and what worked for us with assistive technology. So I spent one year there. I did grade eight there, and from there, I transferred to Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary School. And from what I learned, I determined that, for my use case in assistive technology, I want to do it with an iPad and a laptop. Because now, now you can, there's assistive technology built into every Apple device and Google Chrome. So, and from there, I also learned that it's much easier to just have like a pair of headphones and a big headset, because in the past with Dragon, you would have to carry a big headset, and it would be very clunky, but also the software itself wasn't the greatest. So being able to just open up any iOS device, or even Windows at this rate, and just having assistive technology, it really allowed me to excel, and it really allowed me to get my stuff done faster. Yeah, so I was here for two years, two, grade nine, ten? No, eight, nine, what I go. So I didn't catch it myself, it was just a call from my second year, and through there, I learned that I'd rather have a computer than an iPad, because I'd rather have a million things open than having like one thing at a time, where I could just do a ton of stuff and go check back and do that way. Like, I still use a computer today, because it's more efficient, faster, and better. So that's why I use it at school, and I have a computer, same things that you do, but better. Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, we continued our Holy Trinity with assistive technology, and ultimately, it allowed us to get where we're going next year. So with the use of assistive technology, it's allowed both of us to move on to post-secondary. And I don't see myself without assistive technology, and I have no idea where I'd be going, but I know it wouldn't be university engineering. So assistive technology has really helped around for us. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. This is Bridgette. Bridgette's from Sacred Heart of Jesus. I'm going to just pull this off, actually, because she's actually going to just talk to you about her story. So she's going to tell you her story. She's going to sit, I think that's okay. And I've heard a little bit about this on the video, so I'm excited to hear it again.
Hi, I'm Bridgette. I'm 13 years old, and I'm in grade seven at Sacred Heart of Jesus. I was diagnosed with dyslexia three years ago. Before I was found, before I found out I was diagnosed, it would make me very sad and angry that I didn't know how to read or write. I felt like I was not like all my other friends, because I didn't know how to spell. They could read out loud, and they would, they were all moving up on their reading levels. I would still be on level one, and it would be in the middle of May. And that was, and with that, it brought a lot of anxiety. The teachers used to make your classmates mark your spelling. The problem was, was that I could read my own work, no problem, but my friends would see it and get confused. And I can tell you the best stories ever, and be very proud of my writing. But when my friends or teachers would read it, it, to them, seemed like gibberish. When I got my work handed back, it would look like the page was completely colored in red pen. And when that, and that would say, and they would say, Bridgette, it doesn't make any sense. It's a bunch of run-on sentences. Where are the capitals, and where's, at the beginning of the sentences? As I got older, it was even worse, because it was no longer just one friend who would see my work. Now, we do PowerPoints presentations that are displayed to the whole class. This leads to a lot of anxiety and embarrassment. I wouldn't sit up straight anymore. In fact, I was bright red, and not of frustration, but out of embarrassment, as to why I couldn't do what all my other friends could do. When it came to tests, I would be, I would go home and tell my mom, this is the one I aced. I know it. To my disappointment, I would get it back and realize I didn't ace it at all. I would be crushed. I would just start crying and want, and would beg my mom and dad to homeschool me, but of course, they couldn't. Every Sunday night, I would cry myself to sleep, because I couldn't do the work, even though I wanted to. I would stay up till 11:00 every night, or my parents would have to do my work for me. In grade four, it was my parents' breaking point, and they brought me to a doctor due to my constant complaining about my stomach hurting. So they thought I had a gluten allergy. So for half a year, I was gluten-free, and it was not fun. You put, but the pains never went away. They were still there, if not worse. By the time the school year ended, I was so happy when school was over, but my parents didn't want the same thing happening the next year. And so they recommend, so they got a recommendation from our family doctor to go get tested for dyslexia, and it turns out, the next year, I was diagnosed with dyslexia. Ever since then, I was given a computer and have been able to get my tests scribed for me. I was taught that last year, how to use Read and Write, which is like a garden angel. It will write everything I say, and I can hand it in to the teachers with confidence. I get my textbooks put online, so that they can read, so I can use Read and Write when I have homework, too. I can access my textbooks online, where they are read to me, and I can feel at ease with my homework. I have used Read and Write for a year now, and I can honestly say, it has changed my life for the better. I am now getting 70s and 80s and 90s for a lot of my tests. In fact, there was this one test that everyone got 50 or below, even the smart ones, and I got 95 on it. And that, and that's thanks to Read and Write. I just wanted to share my story with all of you, so that you can tell your sons and daughters, who may be going through the same thing, or even yourself, that it will be okay, and everyone is smart in their own way. Really hope you enjoyed my story, and helpful and inspiring. Thank you.
So we'd just like to welcome back up the students, just to share a small token of our appreciation for coming out tonight. And Matthew and Adrian, I kept mixing you two up, because they're twins, they look identical to me.
Yeah.
It's like looking at, they're looking at me or each other. So Bridgette, Michael, and Adrian, again, thank you.
It's amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I'm sure you can all see why, because these students, they truly are inspiring, and they truly are really weird, whether it's all at university, or whether it's, again, next year in elementary, and we can't wait to see what they do, and what they become, and how they can contribute to the technology that we're able to provide for them. So, and we welcome their parents, too, to events, to every single showcase night with us, and our here guests tonight as well.
Wonderful stories. We can move on to the next item, which is a presentation from ABC Ontario, and I invite Ms. Lorenko and Ms. Lim to give us their presentation.
Good evening. We would like to thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight regarding the gifted exceptionality. And I'm just going to start with some introductions. We have Sherri Foster with us here this evening as well. Sherri is the president of the Halton Chapter of ABC Ontario, and was the SEAC rep for the Halton District Board for eight years, I believe. My name's Maria Lorenko. I am currently the ABC representative to our school board's SEAC. I also serve on the ABC Ontario Board, sorry, Board, as the provincial SEAC coordinator, and represent ABC on the Consortium for Ontario Gifted, which is a provincial-level think-tank advocacy group that meets regularly with the ministry.
And I'm Jessica Lim. I'm the alternate SEAC representative for ABC Halton.
So there've been a lot of discussion, recent conversations at the Board and at SEAC about gifted students and their needs, and whether or not they're at risk. And we really appreciate the opportunity to share some information with you, to broaden the understanding of these unique and exceptional learners. Giftedness is complex, and one way this is reflected is the lack of a universal definition. We'd like to share with you ABC Ontario's definition, which was developed collaboratively with our representatives and leaders across the province in 2017, as part of ABC's feedback into the ministry's review of their definition, which remains on hold. ABC's definition is comprehensive, it's research-based, and it's meant to inform, in particular, to the characteristics of giftedness, as well as the most effective evidence and research-based interventions. And I'm just going to read it out quickly. So asynchronous development, characterized by measurable advanced intellectual abilities, accompanied by any or a combination of heightened intensity, exceptional creativity, persistent intellectual curiosity, rapid acquisition and mastery of concepts, superior reasoning and problem-solving skills, leadership capacity, and potential for advanced achievement in a specific domain or general academic aptitude, and requires interventions beyond those available in a regular school program, including optimal pace of learning, interaction with likability peers, individualized learning experiences, increased breadth and depth, specialized supports, and continual opportunity for challenge and advancement.
So giftedness can occur across all demographics, and in combination with physical impairments and communication or behavior disorders, as earlier, we saw two wonderful presenters of our students. And such interventions are required to address individual needs to maximize well-being, engagement, and to enable each child to reach their full potential. And I think that's what we want for all of our students at this Board. So we now have a short video to share, just to share some common myths about gifted children.
As you saw from our short clip, myths about giftedness and gifted children and students in particular abound. Today, we will focus on the pre- on the myths most harmful for students. These are that gifted students are intellectually advanced in all subject areas, they are smart enough, and will do just fine on their own. In fact, because of their high intelligence, they are sure to do well in school and life, and likely to complete education at a very high level, and land high-paying jobs in adulthood. So that's a myth. These myths have been really damaging, and resulted in inconsistent identification practices and supports for gifted students across the province, despite very clear ministry mandates to meet the needs of these at-risk students. The reality is gifted students don't have it made. Gifted students often have great difficulty, and without intervention, and can drop out and/or lead dysfunctional lives without it. They are often intellectually advanced in one domain, but have a learning disability in another, again, as we saw earlier this evening.
So I'd like to provide a quick reference to explain Dabrowski's theory of positive integrations. If you look at the graph, there are two color bars. The dark represents the gifted. Overexcitabilities are not exclusive to gifted learners, however, um, and actually, not all gifted people exhibit any of the overexcitabilities. And certainly, neurotypical learners may also exhibit some of these characteristics, but there is definitely a higher, uh, degree of correlation. And gifted learners may be more prone to disabling and destructive elements of anxiety, because they typically have expanded emotional brain networks, increased sensory processing, and elevated physiological response to stressors. Also, a recent study with the American Mensa members reported that twenty-five percent greater rates of anxiety than neurotypical individuals exist. This implicates high IQ as being a potential risk factor for affective disorders, ADHD, ASD, and for increased incidence of disease related to immune dysregulation. So if you just quickly take a look at the chart, you can see how the negative, um, cycle of elevated levels of cortisol rewire brain circuits, and it manifests physically. You could see certain allergies up there, you could see autoimmune disease up there, and again, ADHD, SED, those are all listed. And this is because the body moves into stage of fright, flight, and freeze, where the inflammatory response is elevated. Gifted students' brains aren't significantly bigger than neurotypical peers, but they do have comparatively larger regional volume in specific areas of their brains. These larger regions do correlate to areas not just with higher intelligence, but with sensory processing experiences, which means higher IQ individuals have increased brain regions responsible for emotional processing, which will lead to intensified experiences of happiness, as well as sadness.
Research has shown that the physical and psychological development of gifted individuals is as different from the norm as the physical and psychological development of individuals with developmental delays. The further a student is from the norm, the greater the risks and required interventions. So what is asynchronous development? You heard that in our definition. So that is a mismatch between cognitive, emotional, and physical development. Advanced intellectual development can occur simultaneously with lagging, fine motor, and/or social skills. It is so prominent in gifted children that some professionals believe it to be the defining characteristic of giftedness. One such definition is the Columbus Group definition, um, like which starts off with giftedness is asynchronous development. And other key concepts in this definition are advanced cognitive abilities, heightened intensity, experiences and awareness qualitatively different from the norm, which makes them particularly vulnerable and requiring modification for optimal development. Asynchrony can cause fear, anxiety, and depression in a number of ways. Gifted children in particular are out of sync with their same-age peers. Furthermore, because of their heightened sensitivity that we just heard about, they're intensely aware that they're different, and that they don't fit in. An example is a five-year-old, um, child who may struggle because their ten-year-old mind wants to draw and write, like a ten-year-old. It's all in their mind, but they're lacking the fine motor skills to get it out on paper. Or a young child that might have a deep understanding of big world issues like war and social justice, but they don't have the life experience or the emotional maturity to be able to cope with these issues. So when you take asynchronous development with heightened intensity, you come up with increased risk and vulnerability.
So what are the risks, um, in inappropriate programming and placement for these at-risk students? There will be loss opportunity to develop full potential, there will be lower level of well-being, as well as behavior issues. Obviously, sufficient and appropriate interventions are very necessary. All gifted pupils need continual opportunity to accept challenge and take risks, so that they develop the resilience to overcome obstacles and failures. Some students learn to coast, they get good marks, or even excel in school. Others become disengaged, bored, and frustrated. And poor marks and dropping out are not uncommon. In either case, the pupil is underachieving relative to their potential, and fails to develop the necessary skills and confidence, both academic and psychosocial, to handle future challenges. Um, one example of stats will be from RIM. Between ten percent and twenty percent of high school dropouts are in the very superior range of tested ability. And of the top five percent of high school graduates, graduates, forty percent do not finish their post-secondary education. In addition to the lack of resilience in dropping out, gifted students are also susceptible to seeking fulfillment through dangerous risk-taking activities, and there are mental health issues, incarceration, and suicide, which are not uncommon among the gifted. Equitable and effective intervention for all gifted students are essential.
Gifted students need more than short-term, hard-time, or time-limited interventions. For healthy social-emotional development, they need the opportunity to interact and form friendships with likability peers, who may or may not be the same chronological age. Gifted students are highly curious, and they learn quickly. In order to be successful, they need an accelerated pace of instruction at their zone of proximal development, which essentially means the zone in which they are able to learn with guidance and intervention. Research strongly supports the efficacy of many forms of acceleration, as outlined in ABC Ontario's position paper on acceleration, and I shared that, um, paper with trustees via email earlier today. Effective gifted programming and support should include affiliation with those of like mind, encourage risk-taking and build resilience, help recognizing and managing stress and perfectionism, making connections to other students, and engagement via varied pace, depth, and breadth in curriculum, as well as accurate assessment. So we wouldn't use the same measures to evaluate a monkey or an alpines' ability to climb a tree as we would a goldfish, for example.
So, what could inclusion look like for gifted students? Here are just two of the examples. Um, cluster program occurs when a group of gifted students are placed together along with other students in a regular classroom, but are taught by a specially-trained teacher for a proportionate amount of time. So for example, if there are six gifted out of twenty-four, twenty-five percent of that teacher's time should go to addressing the needs of those gifted students, and planning and evaluating as well. Congregated class is where the only identified gifted students make up the entire class. For gifted students, again, inclusion often means being with their like-minded or likability peers. Another best practice for gifted programming is academic engagement via acceleration. A Nation Deceived and the follow-up report on Nation Empowered are both seminal works in the area of acceleration, and they both concluded that acceleration is the most effective intervention for gifted students, because it matches the level and the complexity of the curriculum with the readiness and motivation of the student. There are twenty different forms of acceleration, including AP and IB programs. Accelerated students feel academically challenged and socially accepted, and they do not fall prey to the boredom that plagues many highly capable students who are forced to follow curriculum for their age peers. Acceleration benefits gifted students not just academically, but socially and emotionally as well. So simply put, acceleration works. It, um, being with like-minded students supports social and emotional development, and it provides continuous academic stimulation and development, meeting individual students' needs, and it is an inexpensive option.
So what does one hundred years of research tell us? In December 2016, just over two years ago, a report was published in the Review of Educational Research, of a study conducted by three researchers at Northwestern University and Duke University. They reviewed a hundred years of research, covering one hundred and seventy-two empirical studies on ability grouping, and a hundred and twenty-five studies on acceleration. That is a lot of research. The research shows that the impact of acceleration and ability grouping is statistically significant. And really, it's not rocket science. These are processes that match students' abilities with the appropriate level of instruction. It's common sense. In Regulation 18198, the Ministry of Education recommends five different placement options for identified students, three of which are in a regular classroom, and two special education, uh, class options. In the elementary panel, Halton Catholic effectively offers a full range of placements for gifted students. There's not a lot of difference between options four and five. In the secondary panel, the only options available to most exceptional students are in the regular classroom, and technically, there are three options available for gifted students. We don't have data on gifted student placements, but we know anecdotally, and from meetings with secondary special education department heads, as well as spec ed consultants, that the majority of our gifted students are in a regular class with indirect support. This is defined as being in a regular class for the entire day, and the teacher receives specialized consultative services. Meaning, the teacher will seek out assistance if, if they feel it's necessary to meet a student's needs. But the reality is that in a regular classroom, teachers are dealing with a wide range of abilities, and will focus on the students who are struggling. And really, I mean, that's what we would expect them to do. Um, so, but they're, so they're not going to reach out for help with programming for a student who appears to be doing fine, and might even be excelling in the class. In academic courses, the only, the curriculum is delivered at a level and pace appropriate, and maybe even challenging to neurotypical students. These classes have students with a range of abilities, so access to collaborative learning with like-minded peers is not guaranteed for gifted students. Again, teachers' priorities will be to address the needs of struggling students, and again, as we would expect. The situation is, will only be exacerbated with the larger class sizes that we've recently, that were recently announced by our current government. As such, in Halton Catholic, opportunities for gifted students to be academically challenged and with like-minded peers is limited to students who can access AP or IB programming. In these programs, the curriculum is delivered at a faster pace, and with increased depth and breadth. These programs also naturally attract gifted, as well as high ability and/or highly motivated and focused students. AP programs available in three of our secondary schools, and IB programming is available in one. So how can Halton Catholic meet the nee- needs of all secondary gifted students? What about inclusion, and the importance of being with like-minded peers?
So here's a chart that sort of shows examples of how other boards are programming for secondary gifted students compared to us. So the one in red is Halton Catholic, and right below is our Coterminus Board. They have six, uh, locations, and they have the congregated model, which they do combine with high-achieving students. And some of those schools do offer AP in grade twelve, and one of them also has IB, but is not linked to the gifted program. Dufferin Peale actually has IB listed in their spec ed plan as a gifted placement. And if you see another asterisk there, the York Catholic District School Board, that board actually has, um, elected to have AP as a, a curriculum extension for gifted students. And clustering is offered in locations with AP and IB in Peale District School Boards, I'm sorry, Toronto Catholic District School Board, to allow greater options for gifted students. So that's just some examples of how some boards, um, went to support their gifted
So as seen on the previous slide, there's inequity of programming options for Halton Catholic gifted students within Halton and throughout the province. So where do we go from here? So there's currently a, a motion on hold at the Board of Trustees, it's on the agenda, I guess, tonight, with respect to access to appropriate programming for secondary gifted students. Um, and the parent, the results of the parent survey are also being discussed this evening. So we would like the opportunity to continue the conversation with staff, to share feedback and concerns from the parent and student community, and to collaborate on closing the identified gaps.
We'd like to end our presentation with this quote. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Trustees, comments, questions? Trustee Agnew.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question, if you want to, because you can go back, um, to the slide that has, um, how other boards are supporting secondary gifted, so, I guess there's just a few back, like forty-two, I think it was slide forty-two, if I'm looking at it. This one? So, I mean, I look at that, and I'm concerned. Um, you know, certainly to see, you know, us being the only ones in red. Um, I'm wondering if, you know, if maybe someone can comment on that. Is that, I mean, is that what we're seeing? Are we, you know, falling that far behind as far as how we're supporting our gifted learners, um, compared to some of these boards? Recognizing that these are not obviously all the boards in Ontario, but some that are probably, um, close enough for comparison. So I just, I don't know who wants to answer that, but, maybe.
And just an observation on that, these appear to be the, some of the biggest boards in Ontario, right?
Agree. I just want to understand how, you know, why we're all in red.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I've reached out to, uh, our Taro partners, Taro's, the Taro, uh, tr- uh, sorry, the, uh, Toronto Area Regional, uh, Superintendents of Special Education. And, and so I, 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 I reached out to the ones that were listed there, and also the other ones that are in our area, including, uh, Wellington, Upper Grand, and boards that are similar size to ours. So there's some inconsistencies from what I heard from special education superintendents from what's listed up there. Uh, Toronto Catholic does not provide clustered congregated classrooms, uh, through their superintendent, just in this last week, I spoke to them. Uh, Toronto District, District School Board provides what, uh, they, they, they give, uh, municipal bus passes to students who are gifted, to, uh, to use the local transportation. Uh, but there is, uh, they've just recently put a motion to remove that, uh, again, for funding purposes. They've, they're, they're in the process of, of considering removing that, that transportation piece. Uh, York District, uh, the, the, uh, they have clustered congregated classes, but the pre-AP gifted placement is, they don't provide transportation to. Uh, and in fact, again, uh, Toronto, I think I mentioned, Toronto Catholic doesn't provide any of, they have the same model that we do. Uh, Wellington Catholic, which is the Guelph area, Upper Grand, which is the, uh, the, the public equivalent, um, they have similar or less, uh, programs than we do, if considering we have AP. So there's some inconsistencies, it's not, we felt that it might not be complete, just to give you a full picture of all the areas, uh, all the districts within the, you know, the Golden Horseshoe area and beyond. Um, and again, as you'd mentioned, these are the larger boards, those that are closer, similar to our size, don't offer the transportation. Uh, again, one final, uh, York Region provides clustered programming only to grade nine
Any observations on that?
Can we comment?
Yes. Go ahead.
Um, so with all due respect, I don't think you answered the question. Uh, the question is, why don't, um, why doesn't the Halton Catholic District School Board offer, uh, placements and programs for children who are gifted in secondary school? So what I heard was, a list of boards that don't provide something else, so they're just as bad. Um, but there's also a lot of boards, including our own Halton District School Board right here, that does recognize the needs of these kids. So I'm wondering if you can answer the question as to why there is no, um, interest in supporting kids who are gifted in secondary.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I thought I answered the question. The question was, can you comment on the, on the chart, its accuracy, the concern? Uh, we do support our gifted students in, in our secondary schools through placement option one, two, or three, as it was indicated in, in the presentation. Uh, we feel very confidently that, that their needs are being met. In fact, later on, there'll be a survey, uh, the research from the survey departa- sorry, survey from the research department, uh, confirms what, what, uh, what we had, had stated in the past, that not only to our parents, but our students themselves. only to our parents, but our students themselves, based on their own survey a year ago, tell us that their needs are being met. Again, it's, there are some areas that we've learned through the research that we can improve upon, but the majority of our parents have indicated that their students' needs are being met in the regular stream, academic stream, in our secondary schools. So we are, we do support our students in the regular classroom through withdrawal support, indirect support, and at times, support in the classroom.
I just want to make, I just want to make an observation. I'd like to give everybody an opportunity to raise a question and maybe, I don't want this to turn into a back-and-forth debate because that's not really the intent. So I will allow your comment to that and then move on to other people who have questions.
Sure. Thank you. So just in terms of parents being satisfied or whether their students' needs are being met, so I haven't had a lot of opportunities to go through the gifted parent survey, but I did have concerns with some of the questions that were in there and the way that the results were shared. For example, there was a comment, a statement made in the survey that academic courses are usually sufficiently challenging. So that's like saying Coke tastes better than Pepsi. Do you prefer Coke or Pepsi? I don't know why a statement like that would be in a survey. And the one stat, so the gifted parent survey shows that 59% of parents of secondary gifted students feel their children's programming needs are being met. That's not exactly a resounding endorsement. 21% were neutral, we don't know what that means, and the survey didn't give parents an opportunity to elaborate on their answer. Only 21% of all students actually felt that their child's program met their academic needs. That's not, that's a poor result. And also, the report didn't share with us what programs those, they didn't break out the results.
Can I interject for a minute? I would really like an opportunity for every trustee to present their questions, right?
Yeah. I just want to address the comment because I don't...
I understand, but we must be careful not to degenerate into a debate because that's not the purpose of the, the purpose was to receive the presentation and to give trustees around the table an opportunity to ask you questions. So are there any questions? Trustees have no time.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, ladies, for the presentation. I do know a lot more about the gifted child as I did before I walked in here at 7:30, so thank you. I just have a couple of questions that I've noted as you've gone through the presentation. So the chart that talks about mean over-excitability scores for gifted and non-gifted, I'm just curious, from a data perspective, how did we get the data for the non-identified as far as emotional, intellectual, imagina, sensual, and psychomotor? Because you've got them comparing to the gifted child, right? Or am I reading this wrong?
This is a summary right out of DeBroski's famous study, over-excitability. I didn't make the chart. This is a well-referenced research material.
And what's the date of that report? DeBroski is his name?
Yes.
I've never heard of him. DeBroski? Okay.
Very, very well-known and gifted.
Is he? Okay, that's why I wouldn't know about him yet, but I'll know about him.
You can call his name, you'll pop up.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you for that. And just a follow-up question when I'm done. Again, Columbus Group definition of giftedness. Who is with Columbus Group? So I was just going to say that's also the exact same definition that's on the National Association of Gifted Children website. I've used that before. Thank you. I've got a lot of reading to do. Thanks.
Trustee Murphy.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was very enlightening. I'm trying to get a better understanding for the relationship between chronological age, the range of abilities, with relation to clustering or acceleration. So, you know, for example, if somebody is 15 years old, I'm assuming that the exceptionalities or the giftedness are very unique to these individuals, so how do we cluster them or how do, you know, maybe you can just map that out for me because I don't have that level of experience with this group.
Sure, I can talk about how it's done in the Halton Public Board. So what they do is they take the kids who are identified gifted into the academic classes only. So in grade nine, it would be math, science, English, and I guess geography.
Common Core, right?
Yeah. The core academic. Yeah, so not the other classes.
Electives.
Not the electives, right. And so what they do is they take the gifted into those classes. If they're not full to the maximum, they'll invite high-achieving students into those classes so they can be topped up and be the maximum. And then what the teacher will do in those classes is go through the information normally at an accelerated pace, but as we heard earlier, not every child is gifted in every area. And some kids will go at different paces. That teacher, every child in that class has an IEP, and so that teacher's aware of the needs of those kids. Those kids are allowed to accelerate at the pace that they need. Many of them will go much deeper and much broader into subjects, but the fact that they're with those like-minded peers enables them to feed off each other and work together as opposed to somebody who might be in a class by themselves. Because you remember, gifted is only about 2% of the population, so there might be one or two kids in a grade in one school, so that's why it's so helpful to have them congregated. So if they can work together on a project, then they can, you know, go off in those kinds of directions. There's a lot more flexibility and choice and range that they go into, so there's quite a good amount of depth and breadth that go into those classes. The teachers actually quite like it in talking to the teachers because they get to go through that rope, you know, instruction real quick and get into what they call, you know, the good stuff, and those kids have the opportunity to really dig into the areas that best meet their needs. And I'll just answer one other thing, sort of one extension to that. The nice thing about whether it's a clustering program, in some schools in Halton, Milton is an example, they'll do the clustering in grade nine and 10, and then they do AP as their option for grade 11 and 12. The nice thing about that option is it's, first of all, it's inexpensive, but secondly, allows those kids to really dig into the areas of study where they're particularly gifted. So let's say a kid is really strong in math, not so much in English, which is not uncommon. In grade 10 or 11, they may choose to go into the regular academic stream but still access the gifted cluster or the AP for the areas that they can. So parents and families really like that option because it really caters to the true needs of those children.
Any other questions? Trustee Carrabella.
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide with the different schools? Because I was curious that some school boards have IB and AP listed as a gifted program or gifted placement, gifted placement. So what does that mean and what would be the difference?
So just a couple of examples. So Dufferin Peale, as I said, in their spec ed plan, they actually leave it as a gifted placement for gifted students to go to IB. So tuition is reduced, they only pay for their exams, and transportation is provided. That was their board's way of meeting their needs. Whereas, for example, York Catholic have chose, they've actually closed their congregated classes and brought in AP.
Secondary.
At secondary level, and they also invite other high-achieving students as well, but they do provide transportation access at central locations for gifted students to choose certain AP courses. And they start in grade nine as a pre-AP as a preparation, and like Sherri said, later on, they get to decide if they want to continue that in grade 12.
Trustee Guzzo.
Just to follow up with that, and maybe you can help me understand, so are you saying that those boards specifically, so they automatically get placed in these programs if they're IEP'd as gifted, or do they still have to go through the application processes everybody else?
I think that varies by boards, or I know in York Catholic, they do automatic, they do get automatic entry, but I don't know what the other boards, I don't know if you...
As far as I know, there has to be an application process for IB.
So which would be similar to ours, which is AP is accessible for our gifted students through the application process.
But only who live in the boundary can access it, right? In Dufferin Peale, every gifted student who gets into IB gets transportation.
But we're not talking about, I think we're mixing two things here together.
I apologize.
Because this here, I don't see this chart as identifying transportation. I see this chart as supporting gifted students with programming.
I'm just responding to you saying we have accessibility in Halton Catholic.
No, no, meaning that we have, we have the program, we have the same program offered.
We have the program, but we don't recognize it as being a gifted program, whereas York Catholic, I know, does, and some of these other boards do recognize it as being a gifted program.
But that was my question, is are they automatically, if they're IEP'd as gifted, are they automatically placed in that AP program? Sorry, maybe you can...
Let's put some order into this, okay? Again, the opportunity here...
I get your response to my question.
Yeah, the opportunity here is to, the trustees to ask questions and receive a response. Have you received a response? No.
So I think Superintendent Cipriano, maybe you have a...
Superintendent Cipriano.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. That is precisely correct. It's the same model as ours. It is open to all students. Gifted students can apply. They are not automatically enrolled. They would have to go through the same application process. Some of those boards that indicated do provide transportation, some do not, some that are indicated they do, do not, including Toronto Catholic. What you will also note on that chart is all of those school boards are significantly larger in number, every single one of them. Again, and when I compare our like-sized boards, many have the same model that we do or less because there's economies of scale when it comes to transportation. And also, it's not just a financial consideration. As our student surveys indicated, a lot of our students do not want to travel to a program outside of their own region. And because our school board has a smaller population, the likelihood is that we would have fewer regional classes, meaning that transportation would be further for all students. We only have approximately, I think, less than 300 gifted students in our system in high school. So you can imagine, that's 300 from grade nine to 12. To offer a wide range of programming would require probably to bring them all to one or two sites only, which would mean long transportation for some that are at the extreme regions of the board.
So can I address comments in that response?
Thank you.
That answers my question, thank you. Well, that was, I think that was a response to my question, which was, is it deemed a gifted program? Are they automatically, my question was specifically, is the AP program listed on the charts here, are gifted students, students that are IEP'd gifted automatically granted access to the AP program?
And in York Catholic, they are. I had extensive conversations with them, and that's how they do it there.
Any other questions? Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you for this presentation. I found it quite enlightening. You mentioned clustered and congregated classes. Does the research favor one over the other in your experience?
I don't have the research in front of me, but I can pull it out and email it to you later. It does say that the more, the higher the degree of congregation, the bigger the benefits of ability grouping. There's an extensive study on ability grouping. So if you're looking at clustered versus congregated, I mean, there could be mixed views, but the more of the kids together, the more opportunities to feed off each other and excel.
Definitely ability grouping, the research shows to be significant.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I know some of the things we just thought you had talked about were with respect to some of the risks, right, for some of the gifted students. And so there was a slide here, I think it's 15 if I count right, but it talked about what are the risks, and it refers to some of their challenges, academically, psychosocial, sort of references, dropout, things like that. And at the bottom, it says, for these reasons, report cards, EQAO scores, and graduation rates are not good indicators of whether the needs of gifted students are being met. My question would be, if those are not good indicators, you know, what are good indicators of how we would measure how students' needs are being met?
That's a very good question, and I think that the best way to determine that is how well, and this is why it's very difficult, and why we look at research to see what are the best interventions for these students, because the best way to determine that is how they do when they leave us. So how do they do when they get to university? We do know that students struggle in first year. They're not used to being, you know, the top of the class. They're sitting beside, you know, amongst a bunch of their peers. So really, it's how they do after, and so I suspect we don't have that kind of data for our board, but that's really the best way to determine it.
Okay. Trustee O'Brien, one more follow-up.
You gave us your definition from the Columbus Group, and you said that the ministry's definition's on hold. Does the ministry give any kind of definition at all?
They have, but it's confidential, so I can't share it with you. They do have, they have an existing definition that's been in place for, I don't know how many years, and they have, they did draft one, but that one's on hold. We've given our input, which is the definition we shared with you, and that we adopted as our official definition as part of that process.
The ministry has a definition, but they won't share it.
Sorry. Let me clarify. So they have a definition that's been in place for a number of years. They started working a few years ago on redefining, coming up with a new definition. That new definition is confidential. It has not been adopted yet.
But I think the staff report does list the ministry definition.
Secretary Daly.
Yeah, I was just going to point out, I think it was answered or mentioned already, that the ministry does have a definition for giftedness.
And if I may, that document that is listed, it's in the Special Education Ontario K-12 Policy and Program Resource Guide. That guide was updated in 2017, and that definition is in that guide, that definition is part of your staff report tonight.
I want to thank you for your presentation. We were delighted to receive it, and thank you very much. There are no delegations tonight, so I'm going to move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the May 21st, 2019 Regular Board Meeting. So I will ask for a mover and a seconder for that, please. Trustee Duarte, Trustee Antomasie. All in favor? Motion passes. Next item is business arising from previous meetings. Summary of outstanding items from previous meetings. The table in your package includes all the running list of the matters pending from previous meetings. Before we move to the first action item on the transportation for gifted students to AP program, I'm going to ask staff to present two staff reports that pertain to this action item. Superintendent Cipriano and Ms. Keating, please report on Agenda Item Number 9.1, Gifted Survey Results.
Okay. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. It is our pleasure to share with you tonight the results of the Parent Gifted Survey. As I'm sure everybody here is aware, this is a result of a motion from the Regular Board Meeting on November 20th of 2018, where the Board of Trustees asked staff to conduct a survey of parents of students with students identified as gifted. So the survey was developed by the Research and Development Team in collaboration with Special Education Services. So all parents of children who were identified as gifted through our Board's IPRC process, which is the special placement process that they go through, starting in grade four, were invited to participate in the survey. What we did was we generated unique survey links for every child who was on that list. We got that list from the IT Department, and unique survey links were sent directly to parents. We sent out a total of 444 links, sorry, 484 links, 243 elementary and 241 secondary parents, and we got a survey response rate of 227, which was 47%, which is incredibly high for, especially for a parent survey for our board. So the results were that parents were satisfied generally with the program options for secondary school. 69% for elementary and 67% for secondary panels, respectively. We found that only 16% and, respectively, 16 and 23% of elementary and secondary respondents felt their child's current placement were not meeting their academic needs, and that was 72% and 60% felt that their child's needs were being met. An overall 72% in elementary school compared to 61%... percent in secondary school, um, were overall happy with their child's current placement. Um, in terms of the specialized placement, we did ask if, um, parents were interested in that. We found that forty-six percent of elementary respondents would consider enrolling their child in clustered gifted or accelerated learning compared to thirty percent of high school parents, who said, had those been offered for their child, they would have enrolled them. Um, and we also took the opportunity to compare the results of the survey to our twenty-eighteen survey for students that we did last year, and we found a very similar, um, where we could compare them, we found similar response rates, and particularly, we found that the priorities of the students and the parents were similar. They both noted that academic achievement, preparation for post-secondary education, and social functioning or connections with their friends were their priorities, um, when it came to high school. So, these, uh, findings were representative across all of our schools, across all of our grades, so we do feel that this is a relatively representative sample, and we did evaluate it for internal consistency. We got the one, uh, zero and one, one is good, one is perfect. Uh, so we got a pretty high rate in terms of consistency, which is a measure of validity. Um, so we are quite encouraged by this. We feel that the, the implications of this report are that families are happy with the programming. Um, we did leave an open-ended, um, opportunity for anyone who wanted to provide additional in, uh, input. Most of the parents who were satisfied did not take an opportunity to provide feedback. Um, some of the parents that were neutrals provided comments, and as was expected, a lot of the dissatisfied comments were, um, were, uh, were submitted, and we put those into themes. The top three themes were, um, a focus on teacher preparedness and professional development, um, enhanced program options in their home high school. So, I want to emphasize that people are looking, parents are looking for opportunities to challenge their child in the program that is closest to their high school. Most of them weren't interested in being bused or transported outside of their area, and, um, what was it? Oh, and a focus on, what was that? Enhanced program options and increased variability, of course, this was the other major overriding theme. Um, so we are working on those. Um, our office is working on a literature review to identify best practices for teacher training in terms of making sure that they're prepared to deal with children who have exceptionalities, and that would include gifted. Um, we do have, uh, a research plan over the summer for looking specifically at some records of all of our students through psychological services, and that will include an opportunity to look specifically at gifted program, uh, gifted students. And we are revising our school climate survey so that we will be able, able to pull different subgroups out. Again, that will include, for the twenty-twenty results, that will include being able to bring out, uh, gifted students in on Gen Pi if they're feeling safe belonging and looking at some of the mental health indicators. Um, yeah?
And from a special education perspective, we shared the findings with our special education team, our consultants, our psychologists, mental health leads, and we already have in plan, place, uh, we already have in place plans for next year, uh, to address those, those themes, uh, specifically PD for our secondary certs, our secondary special education resource teachers, secondary department heads around the gifted learner, their profile, how to support them. Uh, we've looked at, at also supporting schools, uh, with enhanced programming, again, at the school level. Uh, so those are the two areas that we, that we've taken, and we are using as learning for us in preparing for next year, and we already have plans in place for that.
Any questions? We're happy to respond.
Comments, questions? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I just wanted to ask, you said that your method is, parents of children who have been identified as gifted through the board's IPRC process were invited to participate. So, does that mean you did not invite the other percent who had a private IRPC or gifted or through, who are identified through another board?
So, the IPRC, there's no such thing as a private IPRC. The assessment might be a private assessment. Uh, when a child is, is identified through a private assessment, we still hold an IPRC. Our psychology department reviews the private assessment. Uh, they, they either confirm the identification or have questions. Again, those, uh, those, those students are actually identified, there's a percentage of those, um, in elementary, I believe fifteen percent, uh, were, were identified through a private psychiat assessment, correct? But they were included. Their results, they are part of this, uh-
Their results are included, yeah.
-of this survey, absolutely, both in elementary and secondary.
Trustee O'Brien, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. In the findings, it says, "Overall, newer, different placement options in secondary, example, clustered or accelerated learning, were not a priority for most respondents." That's in your findings. Um, which survey question or questions did you base this statement on?
So, that would be the question.
I'll read it again, it says, "In the findings, it says, 'Overall, newer, different placement options in secondary school were not a priority for most respondents.'" So, how'd you come to that conclusion, your findings?
When we asked them about their, uh, their priorities in the study, they already did not say yes, and their comments have, uh, come back and say-
Okay, um, I see that, I see that question, and, um, I see the, um, result. However, there, there is a question three above it, on page seven, and that question says, "What are your priorities for your child's secondary school experience?" But in that list, I mean, in the list, you have athletic programs, awards, employment, um, program of study, but you do not, in that question, mention, um, mention programming at all, or, um, placement at all. So, I would think that if you were gonna make a, a findings conclusion, you might want to put that in, in, in that question. Wouldn't you not agree?
Right, so the reason we didn't, we got, is when we asked them about their overall priorities, are they currently available there more? And it started-
Um, so, so the question that you're referring to about their priorities is what they can choose currently, whereas the clustered gifted programming is not currently available, so it wouldn't be a priority at this time. The question-
But it really doesn't say that in the question, it says, "What are your priorities?"
Correct.
I, I, I just think that if you really wanted the priorities, you would have, uh, included that, since there are, there are still three options they can choose, and, and for, and placement's not even in here. So, I'm wondering about that conclusion in your findings.
Well, we asked that question directly, whether or not you would consider that, so-
I would agree to disagree with you. I would say you did not ask it directly, because if you asked it directly, you would have put a rate in this question, placement, and I really have a problem with that findings and that conclusion. And the reason I quote is because that actually, um, is, is mentioned in our action item later on where it does say that. So, I think that's an important finding to address. I'm really doubting that findings based on that question that you have later on, considering it could have been, probably more directly obtained through this. And I wonder if you would have put placement in that question, what it would have looked like in your findings? That's what I put out, and I, I don't know what the other trustees feel about that.
So, is that a speculation, or is that a question?
It's a question I kind of opened up to the table, I-
Are they, are we in a position to answer that, that question?
Just going off of Laura's point, the reason that it's not a prior, it's not a priority question, is because we modeled this question directly off of the student survey so that we could compare priorities, and we did, as Laura mentioned, find that the exact same three top three priorities came up in the parent and student. So, if we were to adapt and change the priorities, we would not be able to compare, and that was one of the main purposes of this question, which is why, as Laura mentioned, we did ask it separately, and the question that only talks about the cluster and the accelerated learning, we wanted to use own entity rather than throwing it into another question, that would be, then would not be able to compare to more.
Thank you, and just for the record, this is Zoe Walters, the researcher in the research department, who was helping with the study.
Thank you, Zoe. I'll, I'll respond to that response. Then, why would you not have put it in the student survey?
The reason it wasn't put in was because it's not a current option, and we wanted to get their priorities based on what's currently available. We can argue whether or not that's methodologically what you think is the best idea, but that is the reason why we did it, and that's the reason why we did it for the second one as well.
And if I can add, we did, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee O'Brien, we did specifically ask that very question. We thought that would give us a better indication if we were, uh, direct with the question regarding those different programs. We, in fact, again, it wasn't part of our, of our thinking when we created the, the survey, but in, in retrospect, I wonder if it would have been confu-, uh, it would have been not confused, but it would have been part, if it was part of a lot, larger list, possibly the argument could have been made that we didn't directly ask the question. We asked that question directly. Uh, so it allowed us two, two things, to compare with our student surveys from last year, because we had like lists, and we asked a specific question so we could have a direct answer from parents.
I'm, I actually was, I found it as a parent more direct, if you would have asked me directly in that question.
We've got a debate going on over here, uh-
We do.
-trustee, uh, Antomasi, sorry, trustee O'Brien.
Want to close with that?
Um, so, does everybody have any, any other questions? No? Trustee Carabella? Or trustee Murphy, did you have, did you, did I see your hand up?
No.
You didn't?
My hand was up.
I thought, I thought, I thought I saw your hand up. So, trustee Carabella had her hand up, ahead of you then.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Also regarding the, uh, list of the priorities, um, I think from the presentation too, we understood that academic achievement and high marks are not necessarily the same thing, that they're different, how you respond as a gifted student to acad-, you could be achieving or not achieving or having high marks, but not really being challenged, so I'm also thinking that that could have been split, or what was your reasoning to put the two together?
Well, precisely for the fact that high marks doesn't necessarily mean that a student is achieving what they want to achieve. So, we wanted that to be, we did actually want that to be open to interpretation, that their achievement is their, however they believe that to be, whether it's high marks or another form of academic achievement, so.
Just to follow up and-
Again, and, sorry, just again.
Yeah.
It was from your last year's survey, which was the question, and the va-, the validity of that is the, in the comments, that the students did understand what that meant.
So, in all fairness, um, trustee, and that's trustee Guzzo, sorry.
I, I just want to go back to, just to go home on, the reason why we did this survey is because it was, as a result, a dr-, a direct request from the original survey that was done with the children, with our students, sorry, is that we thought that we needed to get a comprehensive look and include the parents. So, this is where this comes from. This isn't something new. This was something that the previous board decided, and trustee Carabella, I believe you were part of that. So, I, I'm, I think that this is a true comparison. If we were to look at it logistically, it's a true comparison with what the students were given to what the parents were given, because that was the point, was to get an even keel comparison.
Correct, yeah.
And, and thank you for actually asking the direct question, which is, and being very specific, because we don't offer it, and I think it would be really, um, misleading for us if we put that as a priority when clustered and accelerated classrooms, we don't offer that. But is it something that they want? Because this is what we're all discussing. This is all very relevant, even the notice of motion that you put on the table, which is, you know, we should be looking at, should we be looking at something like this? And we need to take feedback from our stakeholders, so thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much. Oh, another question. I keep missing a hand.
Sorry, yeah, so are we just talking right now about, uh, eight point one, or, uh, nine point one? Or, I just have other questions? Um, 'cause you just mentioned also in the report, or just saying that parents, uh, wanted their home school, and they weren't interested in transportation, but I didn't see that as one of the survey questions. Can you clarify?
It wasn't, that was in the comment section, which was just an opportunity for them to express.
Okay.
Um, we didn't share that because it wasn't a data point, and because it was highly biased. As I mentioned, it was mostly completed by the dissatisfied parents, so it's not representative of the sample, but we did actually go through it. The comments have been shared with the staff, and we did provide them as a theme.
So, so any comments that, there were multiple similar comments that we thought would be, would be valid to comment on, to present, we clustered, we, no pun intended, we clustered them together as themes, to present to you as the themes from the comments from parents, rather than the individual comments.
It was quite variable, but those were the three main themes that came through. And just for context, they were also quite similar to the main comments, um, from the student survey. So, there was a lot of similarities, as I, as I think I mentioned.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, one more question.
One more.
Well, I'm just wondering where we're at, because I wanted to ask a question directly at, so this is just about the surveys? Okay, so we're still gonna talk about nine point two?
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna move to, we're gonna ask, uh, Director Daly to report on Agenda nine point two, programming secondary students with gifted identification. Secretary Daly?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. This report provides trustees with information that was requested, both in Resolution twenty-eight nineteen, and information requested by the Policy Committee on April ninth, twenty nineteen. Uh, some of this information, we've heard, uh, both in, in the previous staff report and a little bit actually through the presentation today. Uh, so around programming, um, placement options, uh, boards are required to establish special education plans. The Ministry of Education reviews the school board's special education plan each year. Um, the board's special, special education plan comprises a number of elements, um, probably germane to this conversation. Um, it outlines specific information about each type of placement provided at both the elementary and secondary level, um, and it also lists for each category of exceptionality the range of placement options available. As we've already identified this evening, uh, here in Halton Catholic, we provide a range of placements offered to students that we commonly refer to as options one through five. Uh, for those students who have been identified intellectually gifted, our options fall into the option one to four category. So, that, um, kind of ranges from regular classroom with indirect support, uh, all the way to, uh, spec ed, special education classroom with partial integration. So, where students would be in a congregated or regional classroom, uh, for most of the day, and then integrated in the school's population, um, in, in different ways for the, uh, remainder of the day. Um, I think it's important to note that, uh, the placement options are really just descriptions in some ways of the, the placements, um, and really what's important is whether or not students' needs are remet, are being met within those particular placement options. And we, we've heard tonight that it's a little bit difficult, maybe, um, with, with gifted students to just base it on EQAO or grad rates, um, or, or marks, although I think our, our students do quite well in all, all of those categories in our board. Um, and, and I think the question is asked, well, if we don't do it that way, how, how can we do it? Um, so one of the ways we, we sought to do that was through our, both our gifted student survey, uh, which was developed, uh, last year, uh, that, um, surveyed our gifted students in secondary, and then, um, at the regular board meeting on November twentieth of the past year, the trustees asked us to conduct a survey of parents with students identified as gifted, and that's the, uh, the survey results which, uh, which Superintendent Cipriano and, and Dr. Keating just went through. Um, so again, just kind of high level, the results suggest the majority of parents believe we're meeting the needs of gifted students in the Halton Catholic District School Board. There are some suggested areas for improvement, um, or concerns that were raised, they're kind of clustered around, uh, a focus on teacher training, uh, different enhancing program options at secondary, and providing additional options for students. So, that was kind of consistent with what we heard from students in, uh, in, in the student survey as well. Um, again, in terms of the priorities, they were very similar, academic achievement, prep for post-secondary education, and social functioning. So, the responses by both parents and students were similar. Uh, we've, we've talked a fair bit, uh, or heard a fair bit today about, um, possible programming for students at secondary, including advanced placement, uh, and IB programs, as well as some, some talk about clustered or, or other congregated programs. Uh, just a reminder to our trustees that our advanced placement program was introduced to the board as an optional secondary program, that it's open to any interested students through an application process, so any student in the board who wishes to apply can do so. Transportation has not been provided for students who live outside of the now three catchment areas for advanced placement programs. Um, so, a, a further concern was raised that if the AP program is not designated as a gifted program in our board, and it's not, um, then there were some concerns about whether it would be equitable to transport some students to that program and not transport other students to that program. Uh, so the table that's in the package, uh, which was developed in consultation with Halton Student Transfer- with Holton Student Transportation Services, uh, gives an estimated cost of transporting students to advanced placement programs throughout municipalities, uh, throughout all of our municipalities. Um, you can see from the, the numbers there uh, that the cost would be sizable, uh, and if we included transportation to all students, uh, the estimated costs, they're really, run somewhere between, anywhere between three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, we're currently projecting a shortfall to our transportation budget this year, approximately a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. That's despite the fact that our overall transportation budget has been increased. We've been able to lessen the deficit we have in transportation, but certainly not eliminate it. Trustees are aware from, um, uh, kind of the, the budget update or working session that we had last week, that again, we are in a very challenging budget year this year. Difficult to predict what will come in the, uh, the coming years. Um, uh, wa- and we have had some increases in certain areas with regards to our funding, particularly with special education funding, but we'll still maintain a pretty sizable shortfall, it looks like, in terms of how we fund special education within the board. One of the other elements that, uh, that came out of Resolution twenty-eight nineteen was to look at the Vision twenty-twenty report that the previous government had kind of promised. We haven't seen that report. Um, uh, all we've really seen in terms of an update in the technical papers that come along with our education funding, uh, there is a statement that says the ministry is still committed to undertaking review of student transportation funding in order to achieve a more efficient and accountable student transportation system, but there's no indication of when that's going to happen. So in terms of even projecting our future transportation funding, it's really unclear at this point. Um, I think in the past also, there's, uh, and we saw some, uh, some numbers from some of our neighboring boards around programming that's offered in other boards. Um, so, uh, I, I mean, regardless of whether they're bigger than us or not, uh, there are boards that have more than a handful of advanced placement programs. We've increased our advanced placement programs to three, uh, in the board, uh, which for the size of our board is probably comparable. Uh, but regardless of that, if, if another thought was, um, could we kind of deal with the transportation costs by opening up more AP sites, or putting the program in more schools? Again, there's, uh, both a, a not insignificant startup budget to that, and then ongoing considerations as well, in terms of what the ongoing operational costs are. Um, so I think, uh, what's outlined in this report, um, does provide trustees with, uh, some of the information they wanted around ministry guidelines and special education, uh, possible costs involved in transporting students either gifted or not gifted to advanced placement programs in our board. Uh, and unfortunately, the Vision twenty-twenty, um, report is still, uh, the, the results of that are kind of still unknown, pending, if, if ever. Uh, so that's my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions or call on some of my colleagues to provide more details if possible.
Trustee Guzzo?
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, I have a couple of questions, but I will limit mine to one if anybody else does, and I will go back in full circle. Uh, so, a question in regards to the estimated transportation costs. So let's say that even a minimal amount of students do apply for the AP program that are IEP'd as gifted. These costs don't decrease, because we still have to consider that the services still have to take place, regardless if ten students are enrolled, or thirty students are enrolled.
That's correct.
Is it safe to ask another question? So my next question is, and I think I've asked this before, but I want to, I just want to con- confirm, um, how many gifted stu- how many students are IEP'd as gifted currently are enrolled or attend the AP or have enrolled for grade, uh, this upcoming school year, um, that are IEP'd as gifted um, in comparison to the total enrollment in AP?
Uh, I'm going to defer to, um, Superintendent Cipriano, if he can answer that question.
I can.
Thank you.
Um, total AP gifted in all of our sites, uh, we have a hundred and eighteen gifted students in all three sites. Uh, as of January two thousand nineteen, uh, we have in, in AP programs in all of our sites, one thousand three hundred and thirty-two students as of January two thousand nineteen. So approximately eight point nine percent of, of the students in AP are gifted currently, currently gifted.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, trustee O'Brien?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to, um, Superintendent, I mean, um, Director Daley. Um, you mentioned the cost for, um, transporting gifted students in grade eight next year. Um, your figure is three one five one zero two. Is that just the grade eight students? That's on page, um, five of seven. To- uh, year one, total cost, three one five one oh two.
I'm going to ask, um, Mr. Tebow to talk a little bit more specifically about the projected costs for our AP programs.
Through you, Mr. Chair. With regards to your question, yes, it would just be the grade eight students. So you'll notice in the other table there, as the type of bus begins to change over time. So you're transitioning in with a smaller bus, picking up different locations within the municipality, uh, whichever it may be. And then as the program goes, and the students graduate through, or not graduate, but progress through their grade levels, uh, additional seats on the bus are being used. And then eventually, when the size exceeds the size of those mini buses, then you'll see there's transitioning from minis to large buses. So, as was stated earlier, just because of the dispersment of the students versus the size of the bus that are being used, the cost of the bus really is, is very comparable from a small to a large, given, you know, um, you still have the same staffing costs, still have the same, uh, operational costs and all that. There's not a big difference. So as you'll see over time, as more students are attending and they go through the full grade run, that's why the cost increases over time.
So just to make this clear, it will cost three hundred, um, three one five one oh two to transfer all the grade eights, and then it gives a number of two forty-one, two hundred and forty-one thousand. Would that be the rest of the high school students that are already gifted?
Through Ms., uh, Mr. Chair, that's correct. So the preliminary tables, tables one, two, three, those are just for the gifted students. Um, and then the fourth is the, the summation of it all. And then the two forty-one is in addition to, and that's the, the remainder of students within those municipalities that would need to be transported. So you would have to add the two together. So it's three fifteen plus about two hundred and forty-one, and to the maximum, four oh three plus two forty-one, which is a range between five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
Um, just to follow up on that, um-
Trustee O'Brien?
In May of two thousand and eighteen, a report came out from the same organization, HSTS, and it says that, um, advanced placement for gifted students would only cost a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. It came out. That's a huge difference. Can you comment on that?
Absolutely, yeah, and that's a good observation, too. Uh, so with regards to that, as you'll notice in our other reports too, later on in the board in the evening, we're getting tighter and tighter as to how many efficiencies we can have, and how much we can shoehorn in, in terms of more routes. So last year, when we were looking at it, we were assuming that there would be the opportunity to share the runs between other, uh, programs and whatnot. So when you share a run, you automatically divide the overall cost of that transportation or that bus amongst a number of schools. Now, the problem is now, for this year, we've had growth, we've had additional grandfathering, we had a number of things that have been implemented. That opportunity for sharing is no longer available. We don't have the same level of room that we had. And further to that, too, we did a more, much more in-depth analysis as part of this, because of the timeliness of it, we had time to do it, um, where we really routed everything and looked at all the individual students. So you have a much more accurate number this year. And this year, we've confirmed that we can't share, whereas last year, if you look at it, at one eighty-one, if you were to multiply that by two, that's about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that was assuming that you could split the run in half between two schools. In this instance, we, we just don't have the sharing opportunities, and therefore the cost is for the full bus, whereas last year was the cost for half a bus.
Okay. Trustee Guzzo?
And I, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and I'm not sure who can answer this, so I'll just direct it. So I just, I just want to understand again the numbers here. So we've got a hundred and eighteen students that are IEP'd as gifted, that are currently in the AP program, um, out of one thousand three hundred and thirty-two students. So to transport potentially, because we're assuming that everybody requires transportation, because we won't know that, we, well, we won't know that one hundred percent until we know who's outside of the catchment areas. So for eight point nine percent of the people enrolled, the students enrolled, we're looking at a cost of ninety-nine thousand in comparison to, to the other ninety-one point one percent at two hundred and forty-one thousand. Is that correct? Right? So to, to, if we were to transport all one thousand three hundred and thirty-two students, it would cost three hundred and forty thousand dollars approximately a year. But if we transport only the hundred and eighteen, it's going to cost us a hundred thousand dollars a year.
It's through you, Mr. Chair, and, um, by municipality around that number, but no, it's actually, for year one, just for the grade eights, it's going to be three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for just the gifted students attending AP. And then if we were to extend this, because of, we were speaking earlier about, uh, an equity issue, if we were to extend that to the regular day students that are attending the AP program, then the cost would increase by two hundred and forty-one thousand for the ones that are out of boundary and that are not otherwise transported or within the walking distance of the current AP program.
So, sorry, I, I just, because that's my, my error, I looked at just Oakville as the one year. I didn't total all three areas together. So thank you for clarifying that. So three hundred and fifteen thousand for potentially eight point nine percent of students enrolled. Would that be correct?
It would be the representation of the, uh, the gifted students, but that's for, from what I understand, the whole gamut.
We're assuming, I'm sorry, we're assuming that everybody, that whole hundred and eighteen students, like, it's all assumptions at this point, because we don't know who would require transportation and who wouldn't, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The hundred and eighteen gifted students that are currently enrolled, we're not, we are not aware of their locate, their, their home location. So some can naturally live within the boundaries, they may walk, they may get transportation that they would normally be entitled to. Some may be outside the boundary and are getting a ride, taking municipal transportation. We're not, we're not aware of that. We, there's a hundred and eighteen gifted students. We currently, again, I think we heard earlier, we have about two hundred and forty-one gifted secondary students in total. So, again, I think the assumption is to, to trans- if the, if all of them, or as you'd indicated, if any one of them, all we need is, is a few to, to enroll, uh, but if all of them enrolled, the rest of the one hundred and, uh, twenty students were to enroll in AP, that would be the cost.
Any other questions? Thank you, Secretary Daley.
Thank you.
It's, uh, it's, it's, uh, trustee Aunt Tomasi who's standing in front of me.
Sorry. I do want to make a comment to the trustees. Everyone keeps talking about an AP program. I want to remind everyone, what does that mean? Because AP is individual courses. So let's take the gifted students as an example. A gifted student or a non-gifted student can take one AP course. Will that qualif- does that qualify them to be on a bus? Are we going to qualify an AP program with three courses, four courses, five courses? Because it is individual courses that students take, but everyone keeps referring to a program. It is not, it's individual courses. Currently, we talk about students that are allowed to come into the AP program if they in- and stay in that school, if they take two, uh, they must take at least two AP courses in order to have the cross-boundary to go to that school. If they drop down, then they are not considered an AP student. So I think you have to be very careful when you, everyone keeps referring this evening to AP programming. What does that mean? Does it mean three of those courses, English, math, science? But we heard from the presentation, each individual student has different needs, and, and they have to be tailored to those individual needs. So that then will qualify them for busing, and that will go back to the, what, uh, Superintendent Cipriano talked about. Right now, we have a hundred and eighteen, but that doesn't mean that, that a hundred and eighteen students are going to take two, are they going to take one, are they going to take five? Because our schools, some of our schools will have five courses that they will be taking, that the students are interested in taking. But other students may only choose one. Does that student qualify for busing?
Thank you, Superintendent Penali. And thank you, Secretary Daley. Um, we're going to move on to item eight, eight point one, transportation for gifted students to AP programs. Secretary Daley, please report.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this action report is to refer Resolution twenty-eight nineteen back to the Board of Trustees for further deliberation and, and action in light of the staff reports requested at the April ninth Policy Committee meeting. At the regular board meeting held on November eighteenth, the Board of Trustees adopted Motion two, three, three, eighteen. On January fifteenth, twenty nineteen, the Board of Trustees adopted the, uh, amendment to the resolution. In accordance with Res- Resolution twenty-eight nineteen, the matter was forwarded to the Policy Committee and addressed at the meeting held on April ninth of twenty nineteen. Following discussion, the Policy Committee adopted a recommendation to refer the matter back to the Board of Trustees for further consideration contingent on the provision of the following information: information around equity of access to transportation for all students to the AP program, financial implications of providing transportation to the AP program, information around ministry requirements regarding meeting the needs of gifted students, and also a summary of results of the gifted parent survey to help trustees determine if the board's currently meeting the needs of students identified. Um, those requirements were met in the two staff reports, nine point one and nine point two. Uh, I won't go through the gifted parent survey again, other than the summary of results. Majority of parents were satisfied with program options for secondary school, uh, academic achievement, preparation for post-secondary education, and social functioning were the top three priorities for parents, consistent with responses that students gave in the twenty eighteen survey. The following summarizes the findings that I just gave in Staff Report nine point two. The provision of transportation of the AP program for all students is not feasible or fiscally responsible, given the current budgetary constraints. The provision of transportation of the AP program for students identified as gifted is not a sustainable option in the current budgeting process. The Ministry of Education has indicated they're reviewing student transportation. However, there's been no indication of a timeline for completion of this review. As a result, it's a recommendation of staff, the transportation of students to the AP program should not be implemented. The Policy Committee has referred Resolution twenty-eight nineteen back to the Board of Trustees for further deliberation. Without any further action, the matter of transportation of the AP program for gifted students will remain on hold indefinitely. And that is my report.
Thank you, Secretary Daley. So, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, based on the reports that we've received tonight, um, I would like to move an amendment to Resolution twenty-eight nineteen, that it be resolved that the Holton Catholic District School Board amend Resolution twenty-eight nineteen as follows. I would like to strike out the fourth paragraph in its entirety, as the ministry has not released a report on the vision for student transportation, and there is no indication that such report is forthcoming, and as, as, uh, Secretary Daley just reiterated. Also, I would like to add a new paragraph at the end that reads, "Be it further resolved that having reviewed the criteria outlined in Resolution twenty-eight nineteen, the provision of transportation of students to the AP pro- program will not be provided as, as it is not equitable to all students, nor is it fiscally responsible in light of current budgetary constraints." If need be, I can email it to everybody.
That's your motion?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Point of order here. Um, that motion should have been introduced at the time of approving the agenda. It can't be introduced now?
Point of clarity, because it is actually part of this resolution, it actually can be, uh, be brought up and amended, because we, it is actually as an action item on the table, so we can actually make an amendment to it. Point of order, Mr. Chair, so I have made a, a, an emotion.
Yes.
So, the Chair has to rule?
Uh, we accept the motion. Yeah. It's an amendment. We accept the, the amendment and the motion.
So, point of order, needs a second there?
So, I need a second there?
Just a point of order, shouldn't have been the whole motion read first, seconded, and then amendments put on it?
We can do that if you'd prefer. I can go through the whole entire motion. Would that make it easier for everybody? I thought it was just reviewed under the staff, under Director Daly's. He just kinda went through all of the points, that's why I thought, just the need for the amendment.
No, I would suggest you go through the motion.
So, the original, so the amendments were, so the, we know what the original motion was for twenty-eight-nineteen, which was to provide transportation to the AP program for, uh, students identified as gifted. Then there was a further resolve that the HCDSB provide transportation, sorry, so that Resolution twenty-three-eighteen be put on hold and sent back to the Policy Committee in consultation with business services to have this motion revised, so that it's fair and equitable, and allows all students the same access to transportation to the AP program. Be it further resolved that this motion would be pending approval and sustainability through the board's budget. Be it further resolved that having reviewing the criteria outlined in Resolution twenty-eight-nineteen, the provision of transportation of students to the AP program will not be provided, as it's not equitable to all students, nor is it fiscally responsible in light of current budgetary constraints. So, that's how the, the last resolution would be. We got rid of the, the other, um, thing. Being that everything has been resolved, sustained...
Point of order, has everything been resolved? I, I...
Okay, I, can I finish my statement? Which was through the, which was through the Paul, but I'm, I would just like to actually finish what I'm saying before. So, the point is, is, is resolved in that we requested, it was put on hold, pending a staff report based on equity, also based on budgetary constraints, and based on the vision. We know that the visionary report is not, we don't see any timeline with that coming. We also know that there's a change in government, so we can't, when that originally was put into place, it was with a different government. Secondly, was, it was in regards to reviewing the budget, which we have done. It was also put on hold based on whether or not it was equitable. We have now heard from the...
Now, point of order, when did we review this budget on this? I, I don't remember that. But I don't remember deciding that, so...
We didn't decide it. The staff report in regards to the budget was our discussion last week in regards to it, and it was also reported on tonight in regards to the cost for the AP.
Point of order, that was a informal meeting.
What is a point of order, sir? What is a point of order, uh, trustee, uh...
Point of order is the information around financial implications of providing transportation to AP programs. Has that been really decided, that that is true with this board?
That was, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. That was what just, that's what we just went through in regards to the costs associated with it, and then it was also discussed last week in our working budget.
Now, point of order, that was not a board meeting, so if it was not voted upon, it was not voted upon, how could it be resolved?
No, what I would like to do...
Through you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair, I insist, can we establish what a point of order is? Because there seems to be a mis, misuse of it. A point of order asks the Chair to make a ruling. So, what is the ruling that's being made, that's been asked for?
I believe the point of order was yours, uh, trustee, uh, O'Brien.
Point of order was, for clarification, it's number two, says information around the financial implications of providing transportation to the AP program. Point of order is that was never, ever voted upon in, in a board meeting. So, to say was discussed at, at, at a, a meeting outside of a board meeting, I don't think that it, issue's been dealt with. That's my point of order.
Was that the information received in the staff report? That information was received in the staff report, which was delivered today?
It was, but it was not agreed upon by the board. That's my point of order.
He's saying that there was no review prior. The only thing is that we're only dealing with the motion tonight?
Yes.
So, we can't go back with what was presented or what wasn't presented?
Well, we've received the, 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 the staff report. That's, that's what I'm saying, yes. I would like to offer a preamble to this discussion if, uh, yeah. Does anyone, anyone want a second to motion that trustee Guzzo just presented? Okay? Trustee Zarnota. Discussion. Trustee Carabella.
I have a question regarding, um, parents, how they were notified, like, this motion had started, and, um, some information went out to parents about it, I think quite late in the game of the AP, signing up for AP, finding out about the motion, and I'm wondering if, if it's already had started, that, um, some parents have signed up for it? Do we have anybody who has signed up for or requested transportation to the AP, who are, who are in the AP program and, who got accepted in the AP program and requested transportation if they were gifted?
Through you, Mr. Chair. At the time that the amended resolution was passed, the information that I had from our three high schools was that no one had requested transportation.
So, we have a, trustee Guzzo.
Just a further question then in regards to that. When was the deadline for applications for the AP, for anybody to enroll in the AP program? I'm not sure if, if Superintendent, uh...
Early December. Early December in all of our schools. It's always before Christmas.
And when is, sorry, and when is, when is acceptance granted?
Usually, by the end of January, they're told if they're in or out. They get a letter. Thank you.
A vote? Okay, we will take a registered vote.
Can you read it again, please? Can you read the motion again, please?
We read the motion, trustee Guzzo.
Okay. So, the full motion would read as follows. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board provide transportation, this is the original, goes back to, to identify gifted students with an individual education plan to an AP program if one is not available in their cash flow area if requested. Be it further resolved that Resolution two-three-three-dash-one-eight be put on hold and sent back to the Policy Committee in consultation with business service to have this motion revised, so that it's fair and equitable and allows all students the same access to transportation to the AP program. Be it further resolved that this motion would be pending approval and sustainability through the board's budget. And be it further resolved that having reviewed the criteria outlined in Resolution twenty-eight-nineteen, the provision of transportation of students to the AP program will not be provided, it is not, as it, it is not equitable to all students, nor is it fiscally responsible in light of our current budgetary constraints.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, a registered vote. Trustee Murphy.
In favor?
Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Trustee Aunt Tomasi.
Opposed.
Trustee Laza.
In favor?
Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Trustee, uh, Herrero.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Zarnota. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Charlobo.
In favor.
Motion carries.
In favor.
Uh, motion passes. Thank you. So, moving on to item eight-point-two on the agenda. Twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty Trade Missions, Ontario Association of Schools, Districts International, and Canadian Association of Public Schools Interna, International. Superintendent Penali.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a follow-up to the staff report that was presented to the board on May twenty-first, requesting permission to attend, uh, the various trade missions that are being offered through CAPS and OSADI. So, in front of you, we'll find the resolution, and, uh, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions? I will read the, uh, the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the request for travel outside of Canada by one senior staff member to attend the OASDI Trade Mission, November eighteen-dash-twenty-one, two-oh-nineteen, and the CAPS-dash-I Trade Mission, October twenty-third-dash-twenty-four, twenty-nineteen, and January twelfth-dash-sixteen, twenty-twenty. May I have a mover, please? Trustee Zarnota, a second there. Trustee Murphy, discussion. Trustee Zarnota.
Um, I think in regards to this motion, I think, looking back at the budgets, I think it's something that we have to do to gain some more revenue, as we lost revenue in this area last year, so I completely agree with this.
Trustee Guzzo.
I'm just wondering through you, Mr. Chair, if Superintendent Penali would like a travel companion?
Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Motion carries. Uh, we can, we've dealt with, uh, item nine-point-one and nine-point-two, going to nine-point-three, twenty-nineteen-twenty budget estimates, draft one. Superintendent Loos, please report.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. In front of you, see the staff report regarding the twenty-eighteen, or nineteen-twenty budget estimates for the upcoming year, our draft number one. Building upon our meeting last week is what we've kind of tried to do in this report. So, what has really changed? Well, Jay, Mr. Jay Chanthavong, our senior manager, uh, will take a look at that and provide us with a presentation. But just to kind of bring everyone up to speed a little bit, you're gonna notice that our deficit actually increased. We talked about last week about six-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand. You might notice now that our operating deficit is nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand. Why did it change? Well, Jay, again, will be going through that, but the large part is we adjusted some of our staffing numbers, uh, and our revenues and such were impacted accordingly. And without further ado, I'll pass it over to Jay, and we'll talk about it as we go through. Jay?
Uh, thanks, Aaron. And, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, so, we provide a brief presentation here on the budget updates since the, uh, working session from, um, May twenty-eighth, uh, last week, uh, with trustees. So, just to go over the agenda quickly, uh, I'll touch, uh, briefly on the provincial overview and, uh, enrollment before, um, getting into revenues, expenses, updates since the, uh, May twenty-eighth, uh, meeting, and finally, our board, uh, financial position and the next steps from here. So, the board's fina, um, provincial position is, uh, that we're still the lowest funded board in the province, um, at about ten-thousand-and-four-hundred dollars per student, um, and that's indicated on the graph at the, uh, Holton Catholics listed in the green there at the bottom, and the provincial average is about eleven-thousand-nine-hundred. So, it's, there is a considerable gap between the provincial average and, uh, Holton Catholic. And just to move on to enrollments, um, here's a, a table showing the ten-year trend for our average daily enrollment, which is the average of our October thirty-first and March thirty-first enrollment numbers. So, as you can see here, it is, uh, an upward-swinging trend, um, with, uh, the twenty-nineteen-twenty, um, estimate at, uh, thirty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-ten ADE. And this is the main driver of our, um, Grants for Student Needs, our GSN, um, largest source of our revenues. So, moving on to, uh, revenue updates since, uh, since the working session last week, uh, this is an updated table of our, um, total revenues. It's a, just a shade under, uh, four-hundred-and-thirty-five million, um, an increase of one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand over last week's estimates. Um, so what are the main changes in our revenues? Um, the first is, um, that our GSNs actually went down by seventy-five-thousand. Um, the two, um, areas that went down are the, uh, teacher and ECE qualifications and experience allocation, um, and this is due to the addition of staff at a lower salary grid and experience level. And secondly, uh, the continuing education allocation went down due to the addition of, uh, international students, um, identified, um, in addition to what was previously presented. Um, and just a, a note here about the, uh, priorities and partnerships funds, uh, we still don't have them, uh, they have not been allocated to the, uh, to the boards yet. However, we do have the, um, the expenses that are typically funded with these, uh, these, uh, allocations, um, still in the budget. So, once we receive the revenues, it would help our, uh, our board's financial position.
And just to add to that, we're looking for about three-hundred-or-so-thousand additional funding through the PPF, formerly known as the EPO grants, so that would actually impact our nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand deficit.
Uh, thanks, Aaron. So, second slide on, uh, revenue changes. So, uh, as mentioned, we did identify six more international students, uh, which, uh, accounts for a seventy-five-thousand-dollar increase, um, over the last update. And, uh, the other item of note is, um, miscellaneous revenues, uh, increased by one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, um, through a, a, a identification of more facility rental income, as well as miscellaneous revenues. So, overall, as I mentioned off the top, it's a one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-dollar increase in revenues projected. And moving on to, uh, the expense updates, um, so this table, similar to the revenue one, outlines the, uh, adjustments made to the, uh, expenses, um, with the two areas affected being salaries and employee benefits. Cumulatively, they, uh, increased by, uh, three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, and I'll, uh, explain on the next slide, um, the items that make up that amount. So, as mentioned, they went up three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand. Why? Essentially, it's due to staffing, uh, complement increases in the secondary's, uh, teacher panel. We added, uh, ten-point-three, uh, full-time equivalent teachers to address some enrollment growth in the secondary panel, as well as increasing, uh, the staffing complement in the, uh, for early child educators, uh, by two full-time equivalents, again, to address, um, enrollment increase in this, uh, elementary panel. In addition to that, we adjusted, uh, we made two adjustments to, um, uh, other staffing complement areas, the first being the elementary teachers. We added twenty-three-point-three, uh, full-time equivalent originally, um, but recalculated and came, uh, to sixteen full-time equivalents, so that went down seven-point-three FTE. As well, we adjusted the, uh, staffing complement for the school administration staff by seven, uh, full-time equivalent due to the expiration of the local priorities funding. Uh, so here's a table of, um, the total full-time equivalent changes, uh, uh, for staffing over the current years. Staffing complement, um, so as mentioned, um, elementary teachers went up sixteen, uh, total, uh, secondary teachers went up ten-point-three, um, educational assistants up nineteen, early child educators up two, and then the, um, three staffing, um, reductions are outlined there for a total of thirty-six-point-eight FTE. Um, just to go a little further with the, uh, the teaching, uh, staffing changes, um, in addition to adding sixteen above the current complement, um, six full-time equivalent, um, teachers were reassigned from consultant or attendant roles into the classroom. So, the teachers were employed, but they were just being, uh, redeployed into the classrooms. So, the total net change for the classroom teachers is twenty-two. As well, um, five-point-five FTE were identified, uh, consultants and attorneys were identified as, um, redundant, uh, due to them moving into, um, uh, promoted into VP roles, or retiring, or being in, um, LTO terms that, um, are not extended. And in the secondary panel, similarly, um, consultants and attorneys were added back to the classroom, uh, for fourteen-point-three FTEs, uh, and one consulting being promoted and not backfilled. Um, so this brings us to our, uh, current financial, uh, position. So, to draw your attention to the, uh, the middle column, uh, at the top there, uh, the nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand-dollar, uh, uh, operating deficit is what we have currently with, um, all revenues and, um, expenses accounted for. So, the items that may change the, uh, the operating deficit are, are listed here. So, as mentioned before, the, the PPFs, once they're announced, they would positively affect the operating, uh, deficit and bring that down to a, a lower number. And secondly, uh, any enrollment adjustments that are identified, uh, between now and the final draft of the, uh, the budget would, um, impact the revenues and in turn, the financial position. And lastly, any additional information, um, identified that affect revenues or expenses would be taken in consideration, and, um, depending on what they are, they would... would be taken in consideration, and, um, depending on what they are, they would impact the financial position as well. Um, so what are the next steps? We have the, uh, special educa- uh, Special Education Advisory Committee presentation on June seventeenth, and, uh, the final draft of the, uh, budget for, um, June eighteenth, presented to trustees for approval. So that concludes the brief presentation, and, uh, we'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Mr. Chair?
Any questions? Trustee Watanabe.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, question, uh, uh, you mentioned, uh, you showed on the chart a deficit of around nine hundred K, whatever. Yeah, something like that, and then you said, talked about a PPF. Do you have some numbers from last year to give us an idea how much the PPFs would be?
So last year, they were about, uh, three hundred and seventy thousand. We're expecting about three hundred thousand because one of them, uh, one of the grants we definitely won't get, um, the others, we just don't know, um, how much we'll get.
Add to that, it was the outreach coordinator, uh, PPF or EPO that was discontinued for this year, and it was about seventy-three thousand dollars or so. It's called the outreach coordinator position, which was discontinued for this year. That was a PPF slash EPO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a question about the staffing enhancements, and, um, so I remember one of the, uh, budget surveys that we sent out to parents, some of the comments were precisely about itinerants or consultants, um, suggesting to go back into the classroom. So, and I've noticed some of that was done here, so I'm just wondering, how do we determine which itinerants and consultants go back into a classroom versus deciding to hire? Maybe that's a question for Superintendent O'Hare, deciding to hire a new teacher.
I think that question is probably for the curriculum consult, uh, curriculum superintendent. Could you repeat the question, please? Sorry, trustee Caribella.
Okay, well, we had the budget survey that went out to parents for their input, and many times, the idea of an itinerant or, uh, I don't know about the consultant, I do remember itinerant was suggested, why do we have them, or, you know, I don't know. So, um, and I noticed here, we're, we're sending some back to the classroom, so I'm just wondering, how do we decide to be efficient and send them back to the classroom where, or hire a new teacher, because we've also hired new teachers?
So on, uh, i- if we're talking about elementary staffing, um, if we're talking about the elementary panel, essentially, how many teachers are required are really based on the formula, right? X amount of students organized into forty-five different schools determines how many teachers that we need at the school level. So in terms of some of the itinerants or consultants that have moved from a centrally staffed position back to the school, uh, some have been based on, we, we took a look at, at, uh, our current complement and felt where we, um, could offer similar supports to the schools, um, with fewer personnel, that we made some choices there. We've had some, uh, itinerants and consultants accept other positions. We've had some retire, so in those cases, we haven't replaced those positions. So it's been partially through attrition and then partially through some redeployment of staff.
Any other questions? Follow-up?
It's not a follow-up, it's a different topic, uh, but on the budget, so, um, again, on those, um...
Be very generous on multiple questions for trustees.
So on table three, program enhancements, so I just noticed a lot of, um, well, first I wanted to ask about the textbooks. Did that come to us for approval? Yeah? Don't remember that, okay. And then, um, just, so some of them are increasing maintenance supplies and that. I was just trying to see, I would think program is more educational than the actual building, and that that could be put into another spot. I was curious why it was put into the program enhancements.
I'll, I'll address over here, uh, trustee Caribella. It's Aaron, sorry. Um, the reason, it's almost, it's a, I guess you can call it maybe a problem of practice of sports, we've put it in the past, it's always gone under program enhancement. I, it's not really a program enhancement, it's something we have to do to run the schools, so there's not really a, a choice involved in this. We need that extra funding for increases in heating, hydro, and everything else. So I, I would argue that maybe we could even remove it from that because it's, it's the cost of doing business and keeping our schools open, um, so we have those program enhancements. I don't know if that answers your question, or...
I'm just glad you see it the same way then, so.
Yeah, it's not really going to appro- but, because ultimately, it could be, you needed to run a program, you need to have the schools and everything in place, I guess, could be a way to, to look at it too, but, yeah, it's, um, we could just remove it as well and just have it as, it's a cost of, of doing business.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to, uh, Superintendent Loth. Ladies, come on, decorum, please. Um, Eddie, I, I'm sure it was a, a very painful and arduous process moving all of these pieces around, and, and we have a compliant budget, um, at a deficit. I'm just curious, have you had any feedback from the Ministry of Education on what, uh, the ramifications or implications of that is?
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, very good question, trustee Murphy. I've actually contacted the ministry before bringing this report forward and let them know that we're a compliant budget, which is what they asked for, and let them know what our current, uh, deficit is at this point in time. And I heard back today, I got a, a thank you notification for, for making us aware. Um, that's all the feedback, though, I have received at this point in time.
So no makeup change?
Just a thanks, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, Superintendent, uh, Mr. Loth. A compliant budget is no deficit. According to the Education Act, we, we as trustees can only pass a balanced budget, no deficits.
Um, a compliant budget is up to one percent of a, with a, if a plan...
The one percent has been removed for twenty nineteen. Um, the one percent referred to lo- to last year and previous years whereby you were allowed to have a one percent deficit, but you had to take into account your reserve, and if your reserve was above the deficit amount, then you couldn't run any deficits anyway. Um, so a compliant budget as, as of today is balanced. The one per...
Um, sorry.
Secretary Daley. Um, I'll just, uh, I'm just gonna read from the, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty technical paper, which we got, um, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, school boards are required to have balanced budgets, which require total spending to be equal to or less than total revenue. However, there are circumstances where an in-year deficit is permissible if there were prior surpluses, bracket called accumulated surplus. The draw on the accumulated surplus is limited to the lesser of the board's accumulated surplus for the preceding year and one percent of the board's operating revenue, uh, carrying a deficit larger than this amount requires approval from the Minister of Education.
Yes, so we, so, but trustees can only pass a balanced budget. Now, you can defer that by going to the ministry and asking for them to allow you to have a, to run a deficit if you can justify it.
I don't know if it's a, a comment or not, but through you, Mr. Chair, that's what, yeah, we have, we have followed through on that, uh, on that, um, we've notified the, the ministry of our, uh, current, uh, fiscal, uh, reality, so they're aware of our situation and our negative, uh, our deficit budget.
Just to be, just to be clear in terms of, um, what's permissible. So the draw on the accumulated surplus is limited to the lesser of the board's accumulated surplus for the preceding year and one percent of the board's operating revenue. If you exceed that, carrying a deficit larger, a deficit larger than that amount requires approval from the Minister of Education.
So what was our, what was our, um, uh, accumulated surplus? Surplus last year?
That information here, um, give me one second, I'll just pull it up. So last year, we added to our operating surplus, so Jay, okay, you have the slide up there. So our very first line there, it's in red, at nine oh nine, we added, um, two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars last year. What we allocated to our operating reserve, which currently has no amount allocated, obviously because we're in a deficit, but last year, and that would be lined right below where it says internally restricted, we allocated a million dollars. And to our capital reserve, which right now is showing with a, a credit of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we allocated two million dollars. So total, we allocated three point two eight, three million dollars last year. Two eighty-three to our operating, one, uh, sorry, to our operating surplus, one million to our operating reserve, and two million dollars to our capital reserve, so, as of
So, um, the final estimates for twenty nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty will be presented for approval at the June eighteen, twenty nineteen regular board meeting. Capital priorities, list submissions, Superintendent Loth?
Uh, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. In front, we'll see the list, uh, with staff report nine point four of the capital priority submission list that we are, I should back this up, we haven't received any information yet from the ministry regarding a capital, um, reporting requirement as of yet, but we have prepared the list in the event of, um, the information being released. And Mr. Fred Tebow will walk you through the report. Fred?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so as Superintendent Loth has indicated, uh, we have yet to receive a business memorandum that's essentially a call for capital priorities to be submitted to the Ministry of Education so that we can put forward our new school projects. Um, give you a little bit of history, this is very similar to what happened in the last round of capital priorities back in twenty seventeen. We hadn't received, uh, the notice or the memorandum as of yet, but we still went forward with the staff report, uh, to the board of trustees to advise you in advance in the event it were to come, and at least we could still go through the staff action, make sure that you're well informed in advance, and low and behold, it came about mid-June and right in time prior to, um, the, uh, the action report. So with that said, uh, we're still a little bit uncertain as to what's gonna be happening for this year, but, you know, luck favors the prepared, so we're bringing forward this list of capital priorities to you, uh, for consideration. These capital priorities are based on, uh, the, essentially what was brought forward to you on a few occasions as part of the long-term capital planning process. Uh, the latest iteration would have been the draft plan that was brought forward on May seventh, and previous to that, it was the annual facility accommodation report, which alluded to some of these projects. Um, so what we're doing for this round is that we're presenting a total of six capital priorities for consideration. The top four priorities consist of growth-related projects, so these are new growth areas, secondary plan areas that are facing pressures that need to be accommodated with new people places. And then the final two priorities, five and six, is the Holy Cross rebuild project and the St. Dominic's partial rebuild project, both of which are renewal-based projects, uh, which seek to replace, uh, an existing facility, existing people places where students are currently being accommodated. Um, I'll go through the list quick, quickly, and we can ask and discuss, uh, after this, if you like. Milton number three, Catholic Secondary School, is our top priority, it is the most urgent. Uh, the previous board, we informed them, and we, I think we informed you as well in later time, but we did submit an urgent business case to the ministry back in December, advising them that we really do need this school, and we really do need to get started. Um, so again, we're maintaining that, and we're gonna resubmit, say this is still our number one, uh, capital priority. Uh, number two is our Milton number ten, uh, Catholic Elementary School. This is located in the east end of the Boyne Secondary Plan Area, and this is the next elementary school that we foresee to be needed within that, um, plan, and we're expecting that opening date for twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, that school year. Uh, this was also previously a project that, in working with our regional partners, the Consolidated Service Manager of, uh, of the region, identified this as a potential area where childcare would be, uh, a, a good option, so again, we gotta follow up. And we also need to confirm, going back to the memorandum, as to whether or not these projects are gonna be considered as part of this round, so again, we just wanna make sure that we have all our ducks in a row, so if we need to address this, we have already. Uh, so that would be for a five-room childcare. Our number three priority would be the North Oakville CE number four or CE number five, Catholic Elementary School. Um, we currently have an option agreement with CE number four, and CE number five is one that's, uh, located a little bit further east, so again, depending on when the funding comes through and when the need arises, we have a need, either one of those two sites would be good. Um, number four would be our Vision Georgetown Catholic Elementary School, uh, so acknowledging that Georgetown is gonna be in growth and that we do expect the Vision Georgetown plan to eventually come online, depending on when the allocation's gonna come into play, um, we're definitely putting this one forward as one of our top four. Um, then we have the Holy Cross rebuild, which again, this was, you know, between four and five, there's similar projects and that they can do the same thing, but it will more than likely be one or the other, and that one is our number five priority, and it would be to relocate the school to the new site, which is located on Burton Boulevard, um, a little bit more on the east end, because the current site isn't, uh, really conducive to, uh, well, if we have an alternative option, the alternative is better. Last but not least, it's the St. Dominic's partial rebuild project, which was a consideration that was made as part of the, uh, Oakville South Central, um, Modified People Accommodation Review, a lot of acronyms in my head. Just to recap to the Vision Georgetown, the Holy Cross, one of the, one of the two would be eligible for a five-room daycare, there wasn't identified need in the area, and again, we would need to confirm that. Uh, again, going back to the notion that we're not sure as to when the memorandum's gonna come and when the submission deadline's gonna be effective, uh, we are also asking as part of this board report, or we will be at the June eighteenth meeting, to have some discretion as to if the memo were to come forward to us after our final board meeting, that the, uh, that staff would have the ability to alter the submission in such a way that reflects the requirements of the business memorandum. So let's say in the instance that, uh, there's only four priorities, or they're only accepting a certain eight, or year range, or, uh, not renewed, those kind of examples where, you know, one priority project may not be eligible, or the child cares are not eligible, then we can, we have the discretion to pull those out. We're also seeking that as part of this resolution. So the draft resol- resolution is presented to you tonight as part of this report for consideration, and, uh, open to take any questions.
Uh, thank you, through you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, so Fred, I have a three-part question. The chair has trouble recognizing me tonight, so I must have turned sideways or something.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we get to parts one of three, we do need to extend the...
Ah, yes.
Past ten o'clock, sorry, trustee Murphy.
So can I have a motion?
I'm doing my thunder all the time.
Motion, uh, moved by, uh, to extend trustee Antomasi, uh, seconded by trustee Caribella. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, we're extended.
That's okay, it, now my thunder's completely stole, uh, stolen, and it's gonna be as thud, the questions are gonna thud on the floor. Um, so a three-part question. One, was there any response from the ministry regarding our urgent, uh, business plan submission for Milton three? Uh, number two, is it conceivable that they'll stick their head in the sand again this year, and there'll be no capital funding call? And if that's the case, what's plan B for Milton three?
Through, Mr. Chair, um, we haven't received official response, uh, with regards to the, the receipt of it. We haven't received official response with regards to the receipt of it, the, it wasn't transitioned, so may have gotten lost in the shuffle. So we're, again, at least the ministry has been aware that this has been consistently our number one priority for the past, this will be our third submission, but has been part of the top list for a number of years now. So it's, they're not, they're not unaware of the need for this project, which is a good thing. The conceivability of not receiving a call for capital priorities, again, at this point, it's really hard to tell. I don't think that they, we've already had a rather long lapse since the last, and again, the previous one was back in May of twenty seventeen, and if we were to look to previous governments or previous election years, usually it follows about a skip of a year, and then it moves on to the next. So we're hopeful, and we think that we are going to receive one. Superintendent Merrick would like to comment further on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I was at the ministry last Thursday talking about a variety of capital projects, and it was indicated in their, in the GSN release this year that capital priorities would be forthcoming in the next few, in the coming weeks, as they said. We haven't seen it yet, but from my time at the ministry last week, it did seem like the memo was well in progress and just waiting, awaiting release. So, well, I mean, as Fred mentioned, we'll have to see what kind of form that takes, because we are, it hasn't been released in two years, so it could see various changes upon this release, but we're hopeful that it's forthcoming in the next few weeks, and we're getting prepared with this staff report to have our priorities in order.
And the final question, plan B, well, just modified, if we don't get approved, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there, we'll have to look at alternative and temporary accommodations and go from there. But again, we still have a lot of work to do on-site that, you know, is part of the preparation of the lands, which we'll report on in the next board meeting under separate reports, so we're, we're not waiting to take action, we're doing as much as we can within our, with what we're allowed to do.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. One of the comments in the LCPC survey down further points out that St. Gabriel's needs some sort of capital investment. I see also in the long-term capital plan that the Facility Condition Index is thirty percent for St. Gabes, which is over the provincial average. Why is it not on the list somewhere?
Superintendent Merrick?
I can jump into that one. So this board actually already approved renewal work to St. Gabriel's for the summer, so we have work ongoing there, we're forecasted there for the summer, so, okay.
Is that same for St. Rayfield's as well?
St. Rayfield's was not a part of the project for the summer. I believe we have it down in the long-term renewal plan for future years, so it was a report we brought to the board, I believe it was last board meeting, it was in, as part of the long-term facility renewal strategy.
Trustee Duarte?
Hey, Mr. Chair. The question to Superintendent Ryan, we have used some of our capital reserves for Milton number three to start the planning phase and drawings and all that stuff, is that part of the submission to the ministry, or what?
No, so the submission that Fred's talking about is more around, kind of, it would be just the overall size of the building, and to get funding approval to start the capital component, the actual construction. The design, and the board approved funds from a capital reserve to do the design work, which we've been progressing with. What has made that a little bit challenging now is the fact that the, the class size ratios are in question now for secondary schools in the province, so it's made it a little bit difficult for us to target exactly how many classrooms we need in that facility for a certain size, because the classroom, the class size ratio was previously at twenty-one to one, now we're looking at possibly twenty-eight to one, which is roughly a third of the classrooms different in the building. So we've been working on various options with that through Architect, and are waiting hopefully some more clarity in the upcoming capital priorities memo around what the actual class size ratio they'll use for this round of funding will be, before we can proceed further with the design, but.
My question was, I should rephrase it, is the ministry aware that we have put in a million bucks to get a drawing done? Are they aware that we have started work before they have approved the capital projects?
Not that I'm aware of, but it wouldn't be, typically the design falls on the board to undertake that design, so it's not something that we would customarily inform them that we're designing a facility, so.
So yeah, this will be included as an action item on the next meeting, June the eighteenth, okay? Moving on to the information item session, student trustee with, students with the update with Mr. Charlebaugh.
This'll work. Okay, so there's been a, you know, a few, few things going on over the last couple of weeks. Biggest one is the new student trustees and outgoing student trustees, we all attended the Osta Ego AGM, or the Annual General Meeting in Toronto, so a few highlights from that. All three of our incoming student trustees did run for an executive position, though none of them got elected. It's still great to see them wanting to get involved at a provincial level, as well as at a board level. At the conference, we had the pleasure of meeting with Minister Lisa Thompson, as well as NDP, or federal NDP leader Jhaneet Singh. With Lisa Thompson, we, we were able to actually get some, get some good information, she's a much better speaker now than she was in January. I remember when we were at the Oxta one, we had a few questions to that, but I can assure you that over the last few months, if anything's improved, it is her public speaking. So with her, we, we started to dive into a few, a few things, especially student trustees moving motions, so it's, she did, her team has actually looked into the legal basis on why student trustees can't move motions, and there is no legal basis to it. So we are hoping that over the, you know, the next couple of years, we can get this, get that changed so that our student trustees can now move in second motions. So that was good to hear that, you know, as much as, you know, we've done our research into it, that the provincial government is now acknowledging that there is no legal basis to restrict us from doing that. We also started to, you know, ask a, ask a few questions about some of the suggested changes, since we were given the opportunity to do it, why not? A big one that came up was e-learning, and Osta Ego's response to e-learning was releasing an e-learning survey, so that was opened up about a week and a half ago now. So that's a survey directed towards all students across the province, gifted, non-gifted, in e-learning or not in e-learning, just to get, you know, the student perspective on it. That information will be shared as an information item with the Ministry of Education once it's, it's closed on June twenty-eighth. Furthermore, earlier this year, Osta Ego released their vision document, which sort of outlines, outlines what Osta Ego stands for, it's really focused on the, the pillars of enhancing equity, a funding formula, strengthening rural and northern schools, student well-being, system modernization, and school board governance. So since that release, the Osta Ego website has received over twenty thousand direct site searches, which is really great to note, that student trustees are now actually coming to light as the, you know, members of the board, so it'll be neat to see how that's going to not only impact Osta Ego as an organization, but our role as student trustees. Furthermore, our Senate applications are now ongoing and under review, so our new student trustees, once they're completed and approved, will start selecting their new student Senate for the, for the next year. Other than that, there's, there's not much, much new, if any of you have any questions?
Any questions? Next item is school educational field trips. Superintendent Nar?
Thank you through you, Chair. There's, the report is in front of you, for a couple of trips that have taken place next fall for camps, and one of our schools that's heading off to the senior girls soccer at the Oxta championships, leaving tomorrow. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? Item ten point three, provincial consultation of school board financial statements accountants report with respect to the seven-month period from September the first, twenty eighteen to March thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Superintendent Loft?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. In front of you, you'll see information report ten point three, and what this is, is the information report that's regarding the ministry's March thirty-first reporting period. So this is a seven-month period that is required for, in order to roll up to the provincial levels, every sector within the provincial government. So the education sector is obviously part of the provincial financial statements, therefore their financial, their fiscal year end is March thirty-first, so therefore, we have to kind of do a mini-year-end as of March thirty-first of this year, a seven-month period for us. We filed an EPIS on time by the March fifteenth deadline, sorry, March fifteenth, May fifteenth deadline, as well as we emailed the required KPMG auditor report to, not, sorry, not audited, there is specified procedure, report to the ministry by the deadline as well, we sent, emailed those out May twenty-second. Andrew Kaplan, our manager of financial reporting, and/or myself are here to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten point four, Halton Student Transportation Services update, bell time efficiency study. Again, Superintendent Loft?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. In front of you is the information report ten point four regarding the bell changes for the upcoming year. Now, this is something that we do on a yearly basis through our consortium HSTS. What we're doing is, is we're looking for efficiencies within our, our current busing routes, so we're looking for route efficiencies, and part of that relates to the bell time of our schools. Without doing these bell time changes, it would have resulted in an additional three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in transportation costs to our system. Fred, Mr. Fred Tebow or myself are available to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Trustee Duarte?
Mr. Chair, it's going to be a long question, okay, so please bear with me. So ever since the bell times have changed for a couple of schools in Milton, I've been flooded with emails, which I forwarded to Director Daly and Superintendent, this has been an absolutely poor, bad case of poor communication, because communication did not go to the parents, we have some parents, rate peers from Milton over here, they're waiting patiently to hear about this thing. So St. Benedict's School is a late-start school, and the present start time is nine oh five AM, with ten minutes of supervision. And now with the, with the realignment of the times, which is, we have a reason why we're doing it, to save some money, and we did, now the timing of the school has been moved to nine twenty AM. So as it is, it's a late school, and it has been made even later. So put yourself in the, in the shoes of the parents from Milton, the rate peers, rate peers from Milton, I think this is a little unreasonable, because parents have, have been putting their kids on the bus, and driving off to work, and reaching work by nine or nine thirty, or whatever time it is. With this change, and I did discuss with Director Daly, and I, Superintendent, yeah, about this thing, and the answers to the queries went very late. As a result, parents are upset, emails are keeping on coming to me, and I've been forwarding to you all to answer. So some of the questions from the parents were, it's an additional cost for daycare now, because we had to figure out what to do with our kids. The parents, both the parents are working, they cannot figure out what to do now, how to get our kids to school. School will now end later in the day, so it'll end at three fifty, so by then, the kids get home, how are they to attend to their after-school activities? It messes up their schedule, schedule. If you have two kids in two different schools, one's an early start and one's a late start, how are families to, to work that out? Has any, this is a question from parents, and I'm just putting the questions first from parents. Has any analysis been done to see if the start timings of another early school could be delayed by another ten minutes or fifteen minutes to a reasonable time, such that the, the later start school still remains the same, and you could adjust some of the earlier time, so that, you know, you could, you could get some balance? Could the start time of St. Benedict's School be pulled earlier than later? These are some of the questions. I feel this is a case of really poor communication, because one liner went out to the, to the parents, and they're all up in arms, and they're still sending emails. This also limits participation in clubs after school, so think about kids being, participating in clubs after school. At three fifty or four o'clock in the evening, they're still in school, what time do they get home? So these are the, some of the questions that were put by parents to me. Now, as we know, Milton has, parents in Milton are very understanding, we know from past experience, and lots of them have, have resigned to the fact that, okay, school times have changed, we should accept this, but people, some of the people do not know what are their options, whether, whom they should approach. Okay, so as people ask me questions, I tell them, okay, you've got to talk to the superintendent, you've got to talk to the principal, you've got to talk to director. So I have a couple of questions here, and there's about five or six questions, and I'd like, Mr. Chair, to give me the opportunity to answer the question, to ask the questions. First of all, we have a policy here for transportation here. I'd like to know very clearly who sits on the board of directors for Halton Transportation. I think I know, but I'd like everybody to know and understand that, number one. Number two, if our staff was on that board, why was it not brought as an item for approval to the board? We, when you go on a field trip, we ask for approval from the trustees, the board. When we go travel out of the country, we bring it to the board, trustees approve that. Why was this item not brought? It comes, it affects about six or seven hundred people, six hundred people, whatever is in the school. So this is a large number, it affects a large group. So why was this not brought out to us for approval? Is this the norm of just changing the time? Do we need to bring it to us again, or do we just change time? And if at all, we change the time by fifteen minutes, the school starts at nine twenty, next year, the school might start at ten o'clock in the morning, if we have to achieve more savings, okay? So that may be a possibility too. So we want to know how and why this was done, and what's the process, process for that. Hasn't any analysis been done to see if the start timings of another school, as I mentioned, could that timing been adjusted in such a way that it's a, it's a, still a reasonable time when the school starts? Could the start times of St. Benedict be pulled in rather than later? Did we consider the additional cost and hardships that parents have to bear, or we don't care at all? I want, want an answer to this thing. And basically, how much did we save on transportation cost for St. Benedict's School alone? We have a number, three hundred and something dollars, okay? We, we did save some money, but on this particular school, how much money did we actually save by doing this adjustments? So I like a discussion, and then I'd like to put a motion on the table after that, but I'd like to encourage a discussion first.
Your, your question is directed to?
To Director Daly, if he can ask.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There was a number of questions there, so I think I got most of them down. So who sits on the board of the HSTS? I sit on the board, the Chair of the board sits on the board, Aaron sits on the board as well. We have similar representation from the public board. I think the second question was, why was this not brought to the board? I'll stand corrected, Fred, you might be able to help me out. I don't think this has ever been brought to the board. I asked Fred to bring it to the board this year as information, so people would be aware of it, because we do have quite a number of new trustees, so it's not required to come to the board. So we changed that process this year, but I'll stand corrected if we have in fact brought it before. Is this the norm? I guess you mean, do changes happen frequently or yearly? If, if that's what the question was, they do happen every year. So we had five schools involved this year, one school by request, four based on the transportation study. I think the public board had ten schools change their time this year, so it is a yearly I'm not sure it was a question, but you mentioned, maybe it was a question statement, next year, will we go to twenty after ten in order to save more money? We did put specific parameters around the conversations we had this year, so no, we wouldn't consider moving to twenty after ten. I'll leave it to Fred to talk a little bit more about how the route planning, the efficiencies are determined. And if there's additional questions that come from that, we can certainly address them. I guess if one of the questions was, I'll just leave it at that. Fred, you can maybe talk about how the, the route efficiencies are done?
Absolutely. Through you, Mr. Chair, with regards to the route efficiencies, and I think it covers a few other questions with regards to why this school, why not another, can we pull it back, make it an earlier start time? So when, when HSTS looks at this, essentially what they're doing is, again, they, it's not something as simple where they can just plug in some of the parameters into a system and it just generates the route for them. It's a very manual process where, you know, you have the people that are dealing, the planning, or the, the route officers that are dealing with this specifically, they're gonna look at all the single school, or all the schools as a whole, and they're gonna look at where could we add in and try to extend the, essentially the times so as to add a number of additional routes to a complete run. So we have talked about this a little bit previously, and we were doing the annual transportation report where a question was brought up about the utilization of a bus, and why was it at a hundred and seventy percent? So the reason for that, again, is because a singular bus, when it is used multiple times within a day, the utilization will increase overall. So a bus has seventy seats, if you're using that bus, you know, to full capacity twice in a day, that's two hundred percent. So what we're trying to do is maximize the number of runs that are happening on a singular bus. So in doing that, what we're, the task this year, and what the task is on an annual basis is, where can we shift bell times slightly within usually like a fifteen, like ten, fifteen, twenty-minute range? And we avoided twenty minutes for this year, so a ten to fifteen range. How can we shift these bell times so that we can squeeze an additional route, so that a single bus can have an additional, sorry, an additional run to their overall routes? And then that way, instead of just having three, you have four. Instead of just having two, you have three. And in doing that, you're essentially removing a bus off of the entire fleet. So you'll notice as part of the report, we initially, because of growth, because of the grandfathering that we entertain, and the introduction of new programming in certain areas, you know, as well as other factors, we've increased our overall fleet by twenty-one buses. And that comes at a cost of approximately one point two million, roughly, it's about sixty thousand dollars a bus. So we knew that this was high, and we knew something had to be done. So in the planning, the route planning aspect of it, which usually always happens at this time of year. Admittedly, it's late, but this is the time where we receive our funding envelopes. This is where we know what our student population's gonna look like, we have the best registration. So this is the best time to be doing the route planning, and that's why it's late. It's unfortunate, but it is a reality of a high-growth area such as our own. We do this, we try to find as many efficiencies as we can, and we, we base it around that and try to avoid affecting the lowest number of schools to reach the highest yield in terms of overall benefits. Because again, our main parameter here, and I do understand, you know, the optics around it, where it's a dollar figure, but really that dollar figure, we have a very limited budget, and that envelope is the envelope that we receive. And every dollar that we spend on transportation is a dollar we're not spending in the classroom. So we understand, and we do not make these decisions lightly. The goal is always to better what we put into the classroom, so that's the mandate. And further to, the role and the responsibilities of HSTS, it's ingrained and it's embedded within their procedures and their policy and their, their, the reason that they are, that they need to remain efficient, among other things, providing safe transportation, effective transportation, efficient transportation. That is their primary, one of their primary goals. And another piece that's associated to that too, is that we are constantly being monitored, we're constantly being audited by the ministry to see how we're doing. Because this all ties back to the E and E review, the Effectiveness and Efficiency Review that we constantly bring up, and our high rating that we have. One of the reasons, and there's many, this is not the only one, but one of the many reasons is that we are a board that consistently reviews bell times on an annual basis to ensure we find additional savings, and that makes sure that we're operating as efficiently as possible. If we don't continue doing this, and if we don't do the work that we need to do, there is a possibility that over time, as they're reviewing our model and they're monitoring us, and they notice that we stopped doing something that gives us our high rating, then we might drop down to a lesser rating, which then reduces the amount of funding that we'll receive in terms of our deficit. So as Superintendent Loth had pointed out earlier tonight, we got topped up about seven hundred thousand dollars by the ministry because of that. Now, if we lose our high rating, that might be dropped down to sixty percent of the overall funding. So the gap increases more and more and more. So that's a long-winded way of saying that's why we do it, that's how we do it. And we do it on an annual basis, and we always try to find the most effective way of doing it, and trying to minimize the impact, because we do understand that this does create an impact. And we also look to, when we do this to particular schools, we try to avoid doing it on a year-to-year basis. We try to say, okay, that's it for then, and then we'll try to work things out another way. And the last thing I will say is that we are really nearing the end of our, like, we're really tight as it is in terms of our efficiencies, so we're always trying to find it, but more and more, we're, it's becoming more and more difficult. So I hope that answers.
Trustee Murphy.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Tebow. I had the benefit of being at the Transportation Board Meeting, sitting in for our Chair. And really, the change to St. Benedict is not necessarily about saving money, it's really about the issues at Bishop Reading and the overcrowding, and the need to extend the school day. So really, it's an unfortunate domino effect of the overcrowding we're experiencing in Milton because we don't have capital funding for our schools. Can you speak to that, the extended time at Bishop Reading?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I can speak to that, and then maybe a couple other points too. Yes, it is another factor where, because we had to add, go to a five-period day at Bishop Reading, now that extends the day, and then that, you know, adds buses again. So that was one of the realities as to why we had to increase our overall fleet numbers. And as a result, we're trying to reduce that overall impact to the board's bottom line. So because that school is becoming overcrowded, and we need to extend the day, and we can't accommodate it elsewhere. You know, that was, that was another external effect on the way that we operate. Another piece to mention as well with St. Benedict is that, and so most schools that have the same kind of makeup as St. Benedict is that schools that have a lot of additional optional programming to it, so Benedict has the regular track, the early French, and the extended French, because now it's drawing from such a large geographic area, you really need to have it as a later school start, because those kids are being picked up by their buses much earlier on than a school that's just within their community, where, you know, you're, you're, you're within that area. So you'll notice a lot of times that schools that don't have it will be on the, the earlier spectrum, the ones that, or not spectrum, the earlier start times, and the ones that do have the programs are on the later side. So that's, again, so we don't have to pick up the students super early in the morning, just to bring them down to there. So there's a balancing act there as well.
Mr. Chair, follow-up question?
Go ahead.
I don't want anybody, anybody to get me wrong, I'd look for a dollar in a haystack myself, but this is, it's good, it's good that we found some savings here. But I'm thinking, and I'm wondering, why we chose the later school and made it even later? Could we not have found another school and done the same juggling act and kind of balanced it out across the board, such that we, we stay around nine, nine oh five timeframe, and the parents get to work? There's, there's reduced impact on, on their financial situation. We could have done that thing. I just wanted to know whether we did our due diligence on that part.
I need, I need to interrupt you, because we've got to vote for another half hour to extend to eleven o'clock. So may I have a motion? Trustee Antumasi, seconded. Trustee Duarte, all in favor? Motion carries. We're going... Pardon me? Oh, it has to be unanimous. So let's try that again. Yes? Two? Great. Trustee O'Brien, or Trustee Maza?
In favor.
In favor? Trustee Araro. Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Duarte Zarnota. Trustee Agnew. Trustee Charlebois.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo. We don't have unanimity.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I was, I was talking. Could I continue?
Beyond, beyond ten thirty. The motion didn't carry. Hmm?
So can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Point avoider, we do have to finish the item on the agenda, that's my understanding.
Chair, does this get carried over to the next meeting for discussion?
So we don't have unanimity, so the motion failed. So we have to adjourn.
My question was, does this item get carried over to the next meeting for discussion?
Sure. Motion to adjourn. Trustee Antumasi, seconded. Trustee Murphy, all in favor? All in favor? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'm not in favor.
All right, let's do, let's do this around the table. Trustee Murphy.
Uh, motion to adjourn. To adjourn, I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella.
I'm, I'm opposed.
Trustee Antumasi.
You don't have any choice, it's in favor.
In favor.
Trustee Maza. Trustee O'Brien.
I oppose.
Okay, so... Trustee Araro.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
Opposed.
Trustee Zarnota. Trustee Agnew. Trustee Charlebois.
In favor.
And Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
So motion carries. Adjourned. Right. Duarte, would you, would you say the closing prayer, please?
Father, we give you thanks that you have allowed us to work together and serve you during this meeting. We ask your blessing upon our endeavors and upon all present today. May your love and grace continue to guide us in everything that we do, today and in the future. We pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. You're welcome.